All right, the time is 7:44. I would like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Hershey. Councilmember Colacetti.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry. Mayor Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of previous minutes from June 16th, 2025, and June 17th, 2025, Committee of the Whole meeting minutes.
So moved.
Is there, there's moved for approval by Mary Alice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chandra. Any substantive corrections? Grace?
There's just a small logistical one that I think the clerks have covered.
Thank you for that correction. Any further corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Those minutes are approved. Next is any additions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? All right, seeing none, we will move on to presentations and public input. I don't believe we have any presentations this evening, so if anyone in the audience would like to come up to the microphone and share their thoughts, you will have five minutes. Do so.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Jeffrey Bant. I have an opinion on all three of the old business items on your agenda tonight. First, I think that the Lincoln Avenue project is misguided. Lincoln should be made to move traffic quickly and safely south and north, and the pedestrian crossings should be matched to the kind that actually work on Green Street, where traffic is much heavier. Bike riders should be directed to secondary streets like Bucy and not encouraged to ride down Lincoln. Street closings and intersection adaptations shouldn't be constructed, and residents in the neighborhoods adjoining Lincoln should be fully engaged to assess the secondary effects of any proposed dramatic changes. Public input shouldn't be more than a perfunctory box checked by consultants. Second, the license plate readers should be approved if it can be shown that they will help to decrease criminal activity rather than just aid in prosecution of criminals. There is a difference. There is also a need to, for there to be a very well-engineered oversight system with public engagement to ensure there is no misuse, unnecessary surveillance, compromise of privacy, or commodification of the collected data. Three, I support the changes to the specific parts of Imagine Urbana which members of the Wuna community have brought to your attention. In addition, I am particularly concerned about the encouragement of what is termed incremental development and infill, and the proposed exclusion of public debate from making approvals for developments more streamlined. These slippery terms are working their way into the current discussions of the need for more affordable housing, when they have been responsible for the destruction of residential neighborhoods across the country. They are the wolves of overdevelopment in cheap clothing. More density does not necessarily equal more affordable housing. More often it means more expensive rentals, more trash, more cars parked in the street, and more renters with no skin in the neighborhood. These developments are only more affordable for builders, developers, and landlords, not potential buyers and renters. But most importantly, I wish to draw your attention to one matter in particular concerning the Imagine Urbana plan you are being asked to approve. Imagine Urbana is not easily readable, accessible, or understandable, and as a result, I would maintain most citizens have not read or understood the report, and that the council is being asked to approve. This seems very similar to some of the talk recently about big federal legislative bills that are so big that nobody has had time to read and understand them. Representatives are told that the details will be taken care of after the bill is approved. Imagine Urbana is well over 200 equivalent pages, if the truth be known. Also, it is not a document. It's a collection of electronic files that change frequently and are cumbersome, hard to navigate, and presume a citizen has a computer, an internet connection, knowledge of navigation, and online troubleshooting. Even skilled computer users are having trouble reading and following Imagine Urbana and all its associated files and appendices. There is no printed version of Imagine Urbana that can be acquired, purchased, or borrowed from the library. Imagine Urbana copies that are sometimes provided at meetings are feeble attempts at printed documents. They are mis-paginated, mistitled, are difficult to read, and are inconsistent and incomplete. They are not documents but printouts of several, but not all, Imagine Urbana computer files. There are still references in the printed text to click here for more information. Citizens of Urbana have not been able to read and understand this report, and yet we are told it is based on a wealth of public input, but after repeated requests, we have been unable to see the actual public input from online surveys, supposed meetings with the public, and door-to-door conversations conducted by students from the U of I. Public input in this report is summarized in curt, acute phrases, inspirational statements and videos from community partner groups and associates. I believe in public discussion and dialogue, especially when you are considering such an important policy statement. Five minutes of public input from a few people is not enough to engage with the public, so I think you should postpone approval of Imagine Urbana until a significant portion of citizens of Urbana have had an opportunity to read its recommendations. We're under no deadline imposed by law or statute. Let's do it right and listen to what people think. More informed and listen to citizenry can help improve all the projects you are asked to consider tonight. An informed citizenry who supports a project will aid in its ultimate success. The effort to reinvigorate Philo Road, for instance, should focus heavily on engaging the people in the neighborhoods to the east and the west of Philo in the solution. Can I have two more seconds, or just a few? I've only got a few more lines.
You can submit the rest of it to the clerk, and it'll be included in the record. Thank you so much for your time.
The last point is I compiled a summary of Imagine Urbana, and I'm going to give it to the clerk.
Thank you. Yep. Just have to be consistent with feedback for everyone. If anybody else would like to come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, you will have five minutes as well.
Hi, my name is Paul Hickson, and I live at 209 West Indiana. And the last time I saw you, Mayor, was at the town hall meeting. You were a candidate for the primary, and we were going to discuss shortly after that meeting before, and I think Councilmember Quisenberry has told you that I hit a series of health issues which prevented that. Fortunately, I'm well. I've survived my first knee replacement. I'm headed for the second, but I want to say first off, I actually support the sub and substance of what Jeff was saying. I do believe that the Imagine Urbana program is difficult, and it fails, difficult to understand and follow, therefore people have had difficulty with it. But above and beyond that, I think it fails what you and I were going to talk about, Mayor, which was the ability to have each neighborhood contribute to issues that deal with it, to listen to the citizenry heavily, and as Jeff said, you know, we need to be listening to the citizenry who will be affected in the Philo Road area. This is Wuna that that study really targets, and I believe that it is something that the citizens of Wuna have not fully taken in or been allowed to provide input on. I did read that, and was intending to come up here and speak to an email that Esther Pat had put on Wuna, in which she reported that a group of three people on July 2nd met with you, Mayor, and asked you to make the following changes, and that you had agreed. And one was to specify that the definition of N1 should include the intent to preserve existing single-family or duplex zoning wherever it currently exists, that the definition of N1 should be changed as follows: These neighborhoods consist primarily of single houses with some duplexes. Striking the words: and townhouses, and may include low intensity, small businesses, and institutional uses. Three, the description of N1 under place type should be changed as follows: Rather than mostly residential, or just say residential. Primarily, single houses, duplexes. Striking the words: small apartments and townhomes. And striking the words: Small business like cafes and professional offices are appropriate on corners or along the edges of neighborhoods. And there was also discussion about how, in certain streets, I believe it was Vermont and maybe one other to the south, that they would be right-turn-only westbound. That wasn't true of the street I live on, which is Indiana, and it was to be inbound-turning-only. I would respectfully say I agree with everything Esther said, except that. If we're going to make Vermont have the ability to make right-hand turns only and not left-hand turns, that same consideration should be allowed for the street that I live on. That's basically all I wish to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up? Please state your name, and you will have five minutes for your public comment.
Good evening. I'm Eric Sacks. I'd like to follow up about the comprehensive plan, and in particular, as was mentioned just previously, Esther Pat had worked very diligently with a number of people to come up with some really small changes to the text that I think would be valuable, so I'd like to endorse those five changes that Esther proposed, and I believe she sent them to you, and I have a copy I'll give to you, and encourage you to adopt them. I think they would largely be synergistic and be compatible with the spirit of the petition that over 200 people had signed that we presented to you earlier in the spring. And so the first three were read. The fourth one was, remove corridor neighborhood designation along Lincoln-Bucy corridor. It should apply to Green Street only. I think that would be a wise move as well. And then the number five point was, limit aggregation of lots. I think we don't want to see a lot of lots aggregated in big apartment buildings put in their place, so... The thinking behind this largely is, is that there is a minority of owner-occupied houses in Urbana, and in particular, West Urbana. Only about 36% of the housing stock is owner-occupied today, and about 60% or more percent is rentals in the city of Urbana. That's completely opposite most of the rest of the county and most of the rest of the state. So we don't want to see neighborhoods like West Urbana turned entirely into rentals for students, like what we see across the street on the western side of Lincoln Avenue, north of campus, right? We'd like to see the current mix of homeowners who live there long-term, and students, and just everybody else. I think the other thing to point out is that the rental vacancy rate is high. It's like 13% overall, and for units of five or more, it's like 18%. So this is really overbuilt. There is, however, truly a need for low-income housing. That's shown in the reports, but we won't solve that just by encouraging lots of building, because the builders will build for profit, right? So if we want to address low-income housing needs, which is important, we're going to need to find some subsidized way of doing it. So there is a problem. It needs to be solved, but the current way the comprehensive plan is written won't really address that, so we have to find some way to do that. So I hope that these relatively small changes in the text could be adopted, and I think that would solve a lot of the angst of the neighborhood moving forward overall, and perhaps many other neighborhoods as well. The idea of incremental change towards, you know, all apartments, that's just talking about rate of change. We're more interested in what the actual outcome will be, rather than how quickly we get to it. We don't want to, over 15 years, get to just all apartments, no owner-occupier, right? We'd like to keep the mix. So the idea of this incremental, I think, is not very appealing to most of the neighborhood. So I'd like to just switch gears in the final moment or two and talk a little bit about the Lincoln Avenue plan. I think there's a lot of angst in the neighborhood about closing off streets, preventing right turns, and cul-de-sacs, and all this sort of thing. I think the idea that we should be putting a lot of bicycles or directing bicycles to Lincoln Avenue is probably a mistake. Really, the side streets are much better and safer for that sort of purpose. I think if we make the changes that are being proposed to Lincoln Avenue, we're going to see a lot of unintended effects to Bucy Avenue, and that will cause more potential hazards for pedestrians and cars there. I think from my 15 years of experience living in the neighborhood and crossing Lincoln Avenue like twice a day most days, the biggest problem is, as one of the two major only-north-south corridors that go to the highway, right, go to 74, we have a lot of people running red lights, and they speed up to do it. At the same time, we have a lot of people flowing from the neighborhood as pedestrians to campus, back and forth. That is the crux of the problem. If we had some red light cameras that would catch people who went through the red light and give them a ticket automatically, we'd see that drop way down. People care about their pocketbook. These flashy lights in the middle of the street, that scares the heck out of me. I think people are going to race through those, and they're going to kill people. I really hope we can find a way to make this a safer Lincoln Avenue than it is now. I'm a little worried that the plan as it's put forward, probably just make it worse. So, appreciate your time.
If anyone else here in person would like to make a comment, please feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, and you will have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Sarah McAvoy, and my husband and I live at 805 West Michigan Avenue. It's really nice to see you, Mayor Williams, at the helm, and thank you, everybody here, for your service. I'm grateful. We are in support of Mayor Williams' stance in supporting economic development on Philo Road and directing resources to that Urbana community in need of an economic boost. I'm going to shorten some of this. And you once said, you know, we are experts in our own neighborhood and live in, very close to Lincoln, Michigan, and I've lived here 25 years. I do kind of feel like I'm an expert in the neighborhood, and, you know, hey, we're going to have a new coffee shop at Green and Lincoln. Okay, hey, we're going to have some youth hostel. Okay, changes happen, and we want occupancy, and we want tax dollars coming in. That's great. I want to talk about living across the street from Twin City Bible Church has given us years of experience and challenges to neighborhood preservation, and living next to the Church of Urbana for many years. They tried to convert the house next to us, 811 West Michigan, to a fellowship house without a special use permit, including wanting to create a parking lot in the backyard with an added parking entrance off of Lincoln Avenue. We are no strangers to the benefit of the city of Urbana requiring special use permits to proposed zoning changes and uses. And we recognize that special use permits take up city staff's time, but it is a necessary requirement for hoped-for zoning changes. It slows the process down, and involves neighbors, taxpayers, stakeholders, to have a voice in the outcome as it should. Let's see, what else would I want to mention? I know I've already lost on this. We're not going to keep the designation of R1 and R3, and, okay, I want, that's not going to happen. That was my letter from May to you. So I do endorse Esther Pat's definition, so I'll just pop that up real quick on my phone under Photos, that the definition of N1 would be changed to, these neighborhoods consist primarily of single houses with some duplexes, period. The description of N1 under place type should be changed as, okay, you all heard this before. It's been submitted. I just wanted you to know that I endorse it, as do a lot of other people. So, I don't, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say more. I think that there were a lot of signers to this, 213 people. I really hope that has an impact on your decision, and thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comment. If anyone else would like to address the Committee of the Whole, please feel free to come up to the microphone. You'll have five minutes. And if you please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me all right? Okay. My name is Tony Crispin, Ward 1, and I'm here to speak on support of the Imagine Urbana plan. I was here last time it was on the docket, and I'm coming back because it wasn't approved last time. Y'all didn't have time, and that's okay. I will always be here to shoot for housing in our community, and you know who else should be? You guys. This Imagine Urbana plan is our next best step towards getting more housing, more affordability, more variety and options for all Urbana residents, present, future, and I think this is a really good step forward. I know there are concerns about how to get affordable housing, as some other commentators have mentioned. Yes, large developers will be interested in making profitable housing, which tends to always be equated with more high-end luxury housing, and that is true, which is why we can't just plainly say, let's upzone everything and get it going. There needs to be a little bit of subsidized housing here. There needs to be Lytech. There needs to be Section 8, but that incremental approach, where we can go lot by lot and slowly have neighborhoods mature over time into being more complex, more, you know, sustainable in terms of economically, in terms of environmentally, because every house that isn't being built in Urbana is someone that's having to move out a little bit further out of town, and they have to commute in. It's not good for the environment. That's not good for them. That's not good for us, missing those tax dollars, creating more emissions, et cetera, et cetera. So I really am in support of this plan as someone who loves this area. I grew up in central Illinois. I'm from Bloomington, actually. I go to school here. I would like to make this region my home, and I think that Urbana can start leading the way in some of these more incremental development types, in more housing affordability, and this is not a radical plan. I just want to say that out loud. This is a very modest step forward, and in terms of, look, do we have a deadline for this? I suppose we don't. I suppose we can sit on this for the next two, three, or 40 years. We're not bound by law on that one, but I think Urbana, this is the time right now to really put into paper. We wanted to start doing this. We need to cement this down, and not even cement it down. That's the thing about comprehensive plans. We can write them down in a big plan, and it will be in a big PDF on a website, but that doesn't mean we can't change our minds in the future. But it is the city making a commitment to itself and to its citizens. This is the direction we want to start heading in. I think it's time to start, it's time to stop nitpicking this line by line. I think that it's been in the oven for a few years now. I think that the people of Urbana now and in the future will want answers for why housing is so unaffordable, and housing, you know, as you know, is the backbone for a lot of poverty issues, for a lot of quality-of-life issues, and I think that is a good way to get that started. I have two minutes on the clock, so I'm also going to talk about Lincoln Avenue Corridor. I am also in support of that. I think that that, it's also been in the oven for a bit, and we're not starting construction on that for at least five years. So I think a good way to get that started would be to approve it right now, tonight. You guys have the power to do that. Not even approve it, just put your, yeah, we like this. There's good people working on that, and to address some of the issues that have been brought up with, sorry, red light cameras, yes, we could put those up. Yes, it would create revenue. Yes, people would start to understand that they would be getting dinged for running red lights. And, you know, I actually was going to live in the neighborhood across from Lincoln, and then I didn't, because I was like, wait, this means I would have to cross Lincoln several times a day to go to class. But this plan is a very good step towards pedestrian safety, and the issue with red light cameras is that if we just put them up and don't implement this plan, we're not changing the geometry of the road. People drive as fast as the road permits them. This is not news to traffic engineers, and this probably is not news to a lot of you, but roads are designed for you to speed on them. Most speeding incidents are because the road is too wide and people feel the need for speed. So we can put red light cameras up. That doesn't change the psychology of it, and we're going to start farming money out of people who are encouraged by that roadway design to go as fast as they want. So that is not a long-term, sustainable plan. But you know what is? Redoing the geometry of the road, adding bike lanes, and yes, there will, you know, we can bicker all day about like, how will this strange road behavior? How will other roads be impacted by this? But overall, it's a good step forward, again, for us telling us and the community, hey, we want more biking. We want more sustainable options for getting around, just more variety in getting around, because right now, with housing, with transportation, you have one option. You can live in a single-family home, and you can drive a car everywhere. That's not the kind of future I want to live in. I want to have options. I love riding my little bike. I love being able to live in a more affordable house that won't lock me down somewhere for 30 years with a mortgage. I want to have options. I want to be free, because that's the American spirit now, isn't it? I got 18 seconds left. I'm going to levy one piece of criticism at Imagine Urbana, and I think the name, we can be a little more creative with that, because I've seen a lot of comprehensive plans, and a lot of them are Imagine X. I know that's probably not something that's going to be changed, but I'm going to use all the time I have tonight. Thank you so much, and please approve these approvals.
Thank you. Anyone else here want to speak? Feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, and you will have five minutes.
My name's David Huber. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm an architect. I'm a builder. I'm a housing developer. Thanks, Tony. I don't know Tony, but that was great. A breath of fresh air. Okay, I came here to talk about something else related to the comprehensive plan, but subsidies, since it was mentioned, zoning reform is a subsidy, and it's a subsidy that we as a city have control over, unlike macroeconomic conditions like interest rates, unlike the cost of construction materials. Cash subsidies, where are those coming from? The federal government? State government? Let's be realistic about what we have the power as a city to do, and that includes subsidies of some kind. So what I came to say is, change is happening. Is Urbana going to sit it out, right? Some of us, I mean, half the public in attendance at the Champaign City Council meeting about two or three weeks ago were, was Urbana residents. We were there because Urbana, or Champaign, was considering, they were giving the go-ahead to their planning staff to draft new zoning legislation that would remove parking minimums citywide. They would allow small multifamily citywide. That was approved 920, 920, in every single ward of that city. That city's right there. Okay, Evanston, they're working on changes to their zoning, because they've already gone through this comprehensive plan process. They're working on missing middle. They're working on incremental development. This is not new. Okay, Obama is talking about zoning deregulation, increasing housing supply. He's criticizing Democrats at the DNC for what they've done to obstruct the construction of housing for decades, okay? We are about to go out on our own, and I hope that there is an explanation to our young people and to our future of why our city is diverging so hard from surrounding cities, from peer cities like Evanston that we think of as, you know, liberal college-town bastions. I don't get it, so I'm looking for an explanation. If, you know, in fact, these changes that the mayor has agreed to are approved, we think it's, if we stop development in one part of the city, it's going to flow to Philo Road. No, it's going to flow to Champaign, because Champaign is improving their zoning, allowing for development. That is where money and investment is going to go. We live in a competitive economy locally, and they are miles ahead. So we are either going to sabotage ourselves, take a step backwards while our peer city next door moves forward, and so we should be prepared for the consequences of that. So I just asked the city council, you know, what road do you want to go down? If you cave to senior citizen homeowners in one of our city's most conservative neighborhoods, you owe at least an explanation to our young people and an explanation to our future. Thank you.
All right, if anyone else would like to speak, come on up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you will have up to five minutes.
Hello. Hi, my name is Alex Ullaric. I'm a resident of Champaign, and I'm here to speak in support of the comprehensive plan and the Lincoln Avenue Corridor plan. I don't really live in Urbana, so I don't have as much of stake in it, but I, you know, I feel like that people want low taxes, low density, and high-quality amenities, and I feel like they want it all at the same time, but that's, it's not really super possible. So I feel like there's a great middle ground with missing-middle housing where you're not... where you're not all living in high-rises or big apartment buildings. You're in housing scale, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, maybe cottage courts, or maybe we subdivide lots and makes, you know, small starter homes on, you know, out of larger lots. And this can all be driven, you know, without the need for big developers. Small developers in the city can, you know, we can, we can support them and make it so that these are more owner-occupied instead of renter-occupied as much, if that's such a worry. You know, I, I think that kind of anyone, regardless of their physical ability or their transportation choice, should be able to access all the amenities and services and goods that they deserve, that they're dignified to have. We've been, you know, kind of going towards car development, suburban development since World War II, and we've gone in, just in that direction for all this time. But, and we're starting to kind of see the effects of that. I mean, I, I mean, the roads are in, downtown Urbana are just kind of like disappointing, honestly. And I know those are in the capital improvement plan, but it's, it's kind of sad to see that they have gotten to this point. And like, I mean, you could raise taxes to make that better, but like, nobody really wants that. So I think that getting tax, you know, from more residents in a tighter area, you know, we don't need like to build like three new subdivisions with a bunch of new roads that we're going to have to take care of in another 30 years. So I think that, I don't really have much more to say than that. But I mean, I mean, back to the housing part, I mean, imagine just like empty nesters that want to convert upstairs to a duplex and rent that out, and then they'll finance their vacations to Fiji or wherever, you know, just building wealth within the neighborhood. What if they want to also like convert their garage to a storefront? I mean, there's just so many ideas that could come out of Imagine Urbana Plan. I mean, this is just a guide, but I mean, there's just so many opportunities that could come from this. And I don't really have much else to say, so I'm going to end it there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If there's anyone else here in person who'd like to come up to microphones, make a statement, please feel free to do so. Otherwise, we do have some emails to. Seeing none, I received two ahead of time and saw two more come in. So first one says, please read into the public record. Dear Urbana council members, my name is Donnie Sanchez, and I'm a CU Urbanism Club lead, and I'm writing to support, in support of both Imagine Urbana and the Lincoln Avenue recommendations. They both offer an opportunity for the city to choose equity by supporting people who do not own cars and allowing housing and services to be built along transit lines and business centers. Imagine Urbana encourages building more options for housing close to economic centers. If someone who previously had to ask for a ride to pay their property taxes is able to avoid a penalty by walking or rolling their wheelchair to the office, that is a significant improvement in their life and health. Similarly, if cars slowing down slightly on Lincoln Avenue prevents potentially fatal collisions with pedestrians or bicyclists, that's the win. The Lincoln Avenue Project, while not perfect, is trying to prioritize all users on the road, not just the steel ones. At some point, we have to accept that the trade-off of a more sustainable community is one that makes cars less important than people. If we do not start revising our priorities, all of our towns will look like North Prospect and Champaign. Thank you for your consideration. Donnie. The next one, which was specified to be read into the record, dear council members and Mayor Williams, who can argue with the vitality that diverse housing stock, diverse populations, diverse age groups can bring to a town? That's something we all can support. However, having lived in West Urbana for over 40 years, I can say that planning does not drive development. Dollars do. Development is all about the money. Consider for sale 1.2 million. This is the recent asking price for six adjoining lots on Lincoln between California and Oregon. Note sale description, situated in a designated federal opportunity zone. These properties hold significant redevelopment potential, making them an ideal investment for future growth. Note that development would require 1.2 million plus the cost of demolition plus the cost of construction. Sold for a dollar, yes, $1. 200 South Vine, entire city block. The lot was already cleared. The developer only had to pay for the cost of construction. Even at that, the developer had to get approval from city council to scale back his original plans. Do you think you'll get affordable housing, housing for young professionals or seniors anywhere near campus? It's not going to happen. Dollars drive development, not planning. West Urbana is not alone when it comes to the pressure to develop profitable student housing. Consider Northwest Urbana, the area between Lincoln and Wright from Springfield to University. I surveyed this neighborhood, and only five, yes, only five of the longstanding original houses remain. The university does own properties near Wright, but all in all, large bulk housing has taken over the neighborhood. I ask that you modify the comprehensive plan as follows. One, specify that the definition of N1 should include the intent to preserve existing single-family or duplex zoning wherever it is current, wherever it currently exists. Two, the definition of N1 should be changed as follows. These neighborhoods consist primarily of single houses with some duplexes, and then there's a strike through for antones houses, and may include low-intensity, small-business, and institutional faces, uses, excuse me. Three, the description of N1 under place times should be, types should be changed as follows. Residential primarily single houses, duplexes, and some accessory dwelling units, e.g., garage apartments, backyard cottages, and are interspersed. Home-based businesses can be anywhere. There are some additional strike-throughs in that. Four, remove CN Corridor neighborhood designation from the Lincoln-UC Corridor. It should apply to Green Street only. Five, limit aggregation of lots. As Mayor Williams has said, quote, "From the start, I've made it a priority to ensure that the plan reflects to your voices, your ideas, feedback, and hopes of the future." This is what we can achieve when we plan with purpose and make space for every resident to be heard. Please listen to us. Thank you for your consideration. Liz Cardman, Urbana. Apologies for the duplicity of this. Do other council members have emails to read? Otherwise, like I said, I saw a couple more come in.
I do, I do. But I will tell you that they're all redundant, and that they're, for lack of a better term, all advocating for the yesterpat changes, and that you just read. So.
Clerk, can you clarify what the process is, if the wording is exactly the same? Can we note that the text is repeated and who requested it to be read aloud?
Yes. So that is historically what we've done. We've actually received like form letters and petitions before. So what we would do is we would enter the complete text of the letter and the minutes once, or you could read it once if it requested to be read aloud. And then we would simply list the names of individuals who signed on to it as if it were a petition.
Great.
In the minutes at least.
Well, it's been read three times. So, I mean, the changes that are recommended. So, and I think the number of letters are manageable. I would just submit they'd be entered into the record for now.
Certainly. I also don't believe that they asked to be read aloud, those specific ones, if they came prior to 6:30.
Okay.
But I haven't been at my laptop since.
Right. I just see two that specify that they would like to be read aloud that came in after 6:30 and intend to read. That's my choice as the chair, to continue to read those into the record. Any other comments that have been submitted will be included in the minutes, but will not be read aloud tonight. Grace, did you have additional ones that you wanted to read?
I think just those two that came in, but if you've got them, or if you want help.
I would love help if you don't mind.
Sure. Which one am I on? I'll take one from, yeah, I'll take one from David Young. Is that right? Okay. Please read my remarks into the record. I'm writing to urge you to pass the Police Surveillance Oversight Ordinance. Back in 2021, the police department asked for a budget to pay for Flock Safety Automatic License Plate Readers, ALPRs. Since then, citizens have brought up a concerns about Flock's collecting excessive data about law-abiding motorists and inadequately protecting its data. Citizens have forwarded news stories about Flock improperly trying to influence a California mayor, bringing a frivolous lawsuit against a critic, illegally deploying its devices in Texas, Illinois, and other states, and allegedly threatening public servants. City council still has not approved Flock ALPRs. Considering the continual emergence of new bad news about Flock, I believe that the city has avoided embarrassment and lawsuits by not using Flock's, Flock expenditures on surveillance technology deserve this level of scrutiny. Please pass the Oversight Ordinance, David Young.
Thank you. And then the other one says, please read into the public record. Dear Urbana City Council members and Mayor Williams, my name is Anna Hugh, and I live in Ward Two. I'm emailing in support of Imagine Urbana again. The last time I was at council, there was a lot of talk about homelessness and racial inequality, and I want to address how the comprehensive plan can be part of addressing those issues. I'll start with homelessness. It is important for everyone in this room to understand that homelessness is a housing problem. We often talk about the homelessness crisis and the housing crisis as if they're two separate issues, but they're not. They are the same issue and therefore have the same primary cause, the housing shortage. We know from consistent research that the best predictor of a city's rate of homelessness is its affordable, its housing affordability, and that affordability is driven by housing supply. If a city has a high rate of homelessness, that means it has low housing affordability and low housing stock. Conversely, if a city has high affordability, it is very likely, it very likely has a low rate of homelessness. That's controlling for factors like mental illness, poverty, physical disability, and domestic violence. Individual factors like those I just listed do not play the role in causing homelessness that we traditionally thought they did. Imagine Urbana recommends aligning the zoning code in a way that would support expanding housing supply in a financially and environmentally responsible way. Cities that have passed up zoning measures similar to those in Imagine Urbana have made it easier to build increasing, increasing housing options, reducing rent, reducing rent increases, and even reducing homelessness. If we want Urbana to be a place for everyone, we need to make sure that everyone has a place to live. As for racial equity, it is important to know that zoning was largely implemented to create and entrench racial and economic segregation. When it became illegal to block people from neighborhoods by race, communities instituted apartment bans in the form of single-family zoning, knowing that most black households could not afford to purchase a home, and those that could would be issued a federally-backed mortgage. While many will still argue that such zone exists for safety reasons, like keeping factories away from residential areas, most of the zoning code is exclusionary by design, existing not for any health or safety reasons, but instead is historically as historically government-sponsored segregation. Our lack of housing today is a legacy of these practices and pushes black and brown households onto the street and into shelters at disproportionate rates. If we want our community to be more diverse and vibrant, and that's what I want for Urbana, we must legalize a wider range of housing options across the community. Thank you for your time, Anna Hugh. All right. I believe that will close public comment for the night. We will move on to staff reports. Are there staff reports? Okay. All right. Then we will move on to new business. The first item of new business is Resolution Number 2025-07-062R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for the Guadalupe Family Inc. doing business as Sakura Japanese Cuisine, 132 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois. And it's that, it's from Exec. Is that you, Mayor Marlin?
Marlin.
William Spikeout.
I will just speak to it. It's essentially just changing ownership.
Any discussion or questions? Sorry. Grace.
Thank you. I was trying to remember where we left off with this. Don't know if clerk and attorney can help, because we were doing resolutions, and then liquor license we were doing is ordinances. Is that right? And now we're back to resolutions and increasing the number?
So originally, they were ordinances, and then they switched to resolutions, and they have been resolutions since that switch, is my understanding.
Okay. And we increased the number even when it's a business that previously held a license? Is there like, in the Sakura case for this one, my understanding is that they didn't have their liquor license for a period of time. There was no sake with sushi for a period of time. And so that makes sense. They didn't have their liquor license, and now it's coming again, and so increasing the number, right? But wondering with some in general, like if there are some that are renewing. Like, I can wait till the next one, but like on the Silver Creek one, if they still had an existing license, are we still increasing the number?
Yes, in that essentially, once a business relinquishes the license, the number of licenses issued reduces by one. So the overall, like maximum number maybe doesn't increase over what the previous total was, but it's a new license issued.
And also, just to further elaborate, the license is tied to the ownership. So it's not like they can just transfer it. It does have to go through a new process.
Grace.
Thank you. And so I was wondering, I guess, on that realm, I had some general questions here about expiration. Is there any time, or it's just certain conditions for expiration of a liquor license?
So they are on par with our fiscal year, I believe. So June 30th is the expiration each year, with July 1st start. However, I will defer to the attorney for other reasons why a license may change.
Yeah, the licensing year aligns with the fiscal year. So absent someone renewing the license, it would, it would lapse at that point. Or if they notified the mayor's office that the business was closing permanently, then that would be cause for the license to lapse or expire as well.
So we renew every liquor license once a year for every business?
That's right.
Okay. It just seems spread out. It doesn't seem like.
Mayor Williams, did you have something you'd wanted to add?
No, I was going to essentially not say.
That's consistent with the state of Illinois as well.
So just for clarity, they don't come back to the city council every year. Once the number is increased, that's an administrative process to renew.
Mayor Ellis.
So Grace asks a good question in terms of the subtraction and addition of the different liquor licenses. In the past, we had like a little chart that told us how many for each of the types of liquor licenses. It was a little bit easier to say, okay, so the maximum number of R and T licenses is X in the city based on this. And I think that would be helpful if that's something that we could add to, if this goes forward to city council, so that we would actually see what the maximum number is for each license type.
Grace, did you have additional questions? Please feel free to go ahead.
I can, I can see if we can provide that. Grace.
Thank you. Other question was if we could have a map version of the liquor license, and if that's not available, even just like a raw Word doc version of this list. I think I remember how to put it in Google Maps, because I've gotten some questions over the past year or so, really off and on, about the liquor license and alcohol distribution in town. And this is a nice list of it all compiled here. So I was wondering if I could have at least the raw list, and if we have it put into a map form. I think that might be a good visual.
Elizabeth?
So just to clarify, you're asking for a list with addresses?
Uh, yes. So they're already here. I'm looking at a list with addresses. So, but I, I'd have to retype all this. So at least a Word document, so I could put this into a map. But if it's in a map, that would be even better.
I don't, I don't know that, that we have them linked to GIS, that we can just drop them in a map. But I'll see if we can get that in a Word document.
Thank you.
I feel like Kate did that for us one time, but maybe I'm mixing up the business type. But I felt like we were given a map of the geographic distribution of it. I think that'd be really helpful. I'll add in color-coded by type of license, but I can live with just the license due.
We'll ask.
Yep. So I think that, that request before the city council votes on final action. Any other questions, or is there a motion? Chandra.
I'm wondering, I was going to suggest lumping all three, but since we have questions, maybe not. I'll just move approval of Resolution Number 2025-07-062R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of Class R and T, R and T-1 liquor licenses for Guadalupe Family Incorporated doing business as Sakura Japanese Cuisine at 132 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois, onto city council for approval on the regular agenda.
Second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-07-063R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor license in the Class R and T-1 designation for Four Ways Food LLC doing business as Lazy Daisy Diner and Cafe, 300 South Broadway Avenue, Suite 104. business as Lazy Daisy Diner and Cafe, 300 South Broadway Avenue, Suite 104, Urbana, Illinois. Mayor?
I didn't have anything.
Nothing specific to this one?
Nope.
Elizabeth, did you have a comment on this?
So I can just point out that this is located at the south end of Lincoln Square Mall. So just in case anybody was wondering.
Okay. I believe that's the space formerly occupied by Stango Cuisine. Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. That was just going to be my question of is it in the Lincoln Square? Yeah, I think that's exciting in just quick sense that, yeah, I think a brunch place, especially with Farmer's Market and downtown Urbana activity is definitely, yeah, definitely has a lot of potential. So I'm excited to see that. And I think that's definitely a piece of downtown Urbana that could add to our yummy richness of things to do down there. So I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Just backing up a sec, do we have any questions? Mary Alice.
Yes, so you said it was in Lincoln Square. Is it in the food court?
No.
It's in the space where Stango Cuisine was previously located. So at the very south end of the mall, right adjacent to the south entrance.
You mean the idea store?
Near the idea store.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Because I'm trying to, I mean, one thing that we think about when we think about liquor licenses, are we increasing the density within a particular area? And so the previous restaurant, Stango, did they have a liquor license?
I can't answer that question. I'm sorry. I can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mary Alice.
I will move Resolution Number 2025-07-063R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in Class R and T-1 designation for Four Way Foods LLC doing business as Lazy Daisy Diner and Cafe at 300 South Broadway Avenue, Suite 140, to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Any further discussion? Definitely heard some excitement about the idea of a brunch spot, including the ability to have mimosas, I think probably is what people are getting at with this. All right. With that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right. That motion passes. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-07-064R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor license in the Class R and T-1 designation for CRS Silver Creek Urbana LLC doing business as Silver Creek, 402 North Race Street, Urbana, Illinois. Any comments from the executive committee?
I'll just say again, I'll start off by saying it's again, just like similar to number one, just to...
Can you hear me now? Good. So I make my shoulders and back hurt. As I said with number one, it's just a change in ownership with this one as well, so.
Any questions? All right. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I will move Resolution Number 2025-07-064R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class R and T-1 designation for CRS Silver Creek Urbana LLC doing business at Silver Creek, 402 North Race Street in Urbana, onto city council's regular agenda.
Is there a second? I'll second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? I think this kind of just follows with the other ones. Again, just getting clarification, if we can have things mapped out would be super helpful. All right. With no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. We'll now move on to old business. The first item is Ordinance Number 2025-04-013, an ordinance approving a comprehensive plan, Imagine Urbana, Plan Case Number 2502CP25. Looks like we have a couple of folks joining us.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Hi. It's been a while since we've been in front of you and so appreciate this opportunity. I'm Andrea Rudy, Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development and my colleague.
I'm Kevin Garcia, Principal Planner.
Great. And zoning administrator.
And zoning administrator.
So tonight, just got a few brief slides to go over with you. We're going to go over the timeline of where we're at, action items that have taken place since the last time we were before you, which was May 5th of 2025. Talk about the open house that we had on the 28th. And then Kevin's going to go through all of the changes that were provided in the packet that you have. So those are all the changes in one place. So the timeline, just as you recall, we're approaching, or first of all, I should say, we're approaching the one-year anniversary of when the plan was released to the public. And so if you remember, in August of 2024, the first draft was released and we had six different neighborhood groups that we met with after that, held in different locations in coordination with the council members. We then, during that same time, it was in Plan Commission, we had 11 study sessions from August until early in January, February. That was followed by four public hearings that we had on Imagine Urbana. A lot of great input happened during that time and we felt like the Plan Commission gave it some very, very thoughtful review and provided some great comments, especially on the maps. And so on April 10th of 2025, they unanimously recommended approval for the Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan. So then the first committee of the whole meeting after that was on April 21st. At that time, you'll remember that you requested some modifications, also recommended providing a handout with responses on draft feedback, which we provided you right after that meeting, and then continuing the discussion to May 5th of 2025. And so at that meeting, we looked at all of the feedback we had. We looked at the draft document that we had for the feedback. You requested recommendation or requested additional modifications and also recommended that an open house be held and that the plan stay in committee through June 2nd, since council members weren't going to be present on the May 19th meeting at that time. So then on May 28th, there weren't any meetings between that. On May 28th, we had the Imagine Urbana Open House that was held in council chambers. And then on July 21st, here we are back at it, but we have not had any public presentations or discussion of Imagine Urbana since the May 5th meeting. So the action items that came from the May 5th meeting, we had the responses to feedback handout and we added two to that. One was will people still have input on the types of development that happens in the city and in their neighborhood once Imagine Urbana is adopted? I won't read all this, but yes, of course, the zoning order requires public input in order for any of those changes to be made and that the city council must improve any zoning order's changes. And then this is kind of a blunt way of saying it, but that's the comments that we heard. Are we stuck with Imagine Urbana once it's adopted? No, as it's been talked about for some of the, the public brought up tonight, that it's a living document. If something's not working or needs to be changed, we can change it and after a public process and only, of course, with council approval. So then that leads us to the open house that we had on May 28th. And I want to thank, we both want to thank community members, Evans, Hershey, Wilkins, and Wu for attending and appreciate, I know people talked with you directly that evening. We provided hard copies of Imagine Urbana for anybody that was in attendance. We've continued to do that. There are copies in the city clerk's office, also at the Urbana Public Library. And then on request, we'll send PDFs to anybody that wants a hard copy. We had on display the places types. We had a full-scale maps, which are still up here in council chambers. We also had detailed maps that Kevin did of specific areas that were some of the comments on feedback. And so it was good to go over those with people. We had place types definitions that was in a handout also on the tables that anybody could take with them. We had a places type matrix as well, the development opportunities map, again, which is still posted here in council chambers along with those definitions. And then we had a connected city map at the table. There were comment cards on the, with Word maps. So a lot of people don't know what word they're in. And so we had Word maps available on the tables and then with comment cards. And then responses to feedback, that handout that the council had recommended on May 5th, we had those available as well. So we had 21 residents and business owners come. We also had three media reps in attendance. They did, I think one of them actually filled out a comment card. Nine of those provided written comments and there's the breakdown by Word. After that meeting, we consolidated or compiled all those comments with the in-person questions and we included that in the packet for the June 2nd committee of the whole. So you received a hard copy of that, but we did not discuss that because that meeting was not held. And so that leads us to the changes which you received in your packet, that summary of changes. And Kevin's going to go over those as we speak. You don't have a little room.
Yeah. Is this the one? No, it's fine. Okay.
So we're going to go through that PDF.
If it opens. Is that opening? That's a shortcut.
No, it should be.
Hold on, I might have to pull it down from the web. I think that's, yeah, this one's a shortcut. Did you open it?
Yeah. So sorry.
Let me see if I can, is it open anywhere? It's not. Yeah. It's not even opening. Acrobat. No. Okay. Technical difficulties. I need a graphic on the screen to illustrate those. Okay, so just bear with us while we load that up.
Just while they're doing that to reiterate for folks who are joining us, city council received a document that includes all of the changes that are being proposed. City staff, Andrea and Kevin are working on pulling up an electronic version for a few people who are in the audience here or joining us at home to be able to see. But we've got a link that's not working on the desktop right now, so it'll just take us a moment or two to get that pulled up.
And they were in the packet as well, so the public...
Yes, I did say that. Thank you, Andrea.
Here we go.
Yeah, that's weird. Okay. All right. Let me get to the full screen because that's my favorite. F11? Oh, what is it? There we go. Full screen. Okay. Ah, that's not even good. I need to zoom in. All right. Here we go. Let's do this. So this is how you see it. We figured it was easier to show it this way rather than share what's in the, what was in the supplemental memo that we sent out to y'all. So this is how you'll see it if you go to the website. So it can be kind of hard to see. It's sort of dark blue, strike throughs, and sometimes it underlines, sometimes it just kind of highlights it. So some just important thing we did, we made the message from the mayors, since we had a changeover in mayors during this process. So we just made some minor changes. So we said, you know, we are excited. You know, from the outset, the city was committed to taking a holistic and inclusive approach. We added the two mayors and their respective mayoral terms. So pretty basic edit there. Also, we did this important thing. We added Mayor Williams to the acknowledgements page because he was not on there previously. Another thing we did, and I think this was based on some comments from council member Wu at one of the, I think at the May 5th meeting. So for big move one, previously, we said that Urbana, we heard that Urbana needs housing of all types and at all price points. We changed it to say Urbana needs more housing for people of all ages and income levels. That seemed to be more inclusive of what we were actually hearing, whereas the way it was previously written was more maybe technical and maybe didn't capture exactly what the main thrust of what people were saying was. Okay. So on to big move number three. Recently, there's been a lot of, I think, understanding that the Philo Road business area or business district could use some attention. So since big move three is all about addressing the needs of individual areas and we talk in there about doing small area plans for individual areas, we added a little move to just explicitly say that we should make the Philo Road area the first small area plan. So, and then we added an associated metric, of course, that says, you know, have we developed that plan? Onto big move number seven. This number, we added number 7.6, which was based on comments from council member Wilkin. And this was in response to, I think, some comments about, you know, we have the enterprise zone, which essentially provides incentives to build in some of the areas sort of on the edge of town or some of the subdivisions that haven't been built up, you know, that were subdivided decades ago. But really, we don't have any incentive program to encourage infill development sort of in our more established neighborhoods. So we added a little move to study the feasibility of financial or tax incentive programs to encourage infill development. So that would give us some direction, give our economic development staff some, a directive on something to pursue when we look at incentives in the future. Another little move we added was in response to some of those, or to that list of comments that we had heard. I think they originated from Esther Pat. So 7.7 is to enact zoning regulations that limit or disincentivize the aggregation of parcels for larger scale development in certain areas. There's a little nuance there. So specifying in certain areas is, you know, there are certain places in town, say the industrial areas on North Lincoln Avenue, where frankly, if somebody wants to aggregate parcels and do a large development, that makes sense there. In other areas, so in neighborhoods where there are a lot of small, older lots, let's say, the aggregation of parcels is probably not appropriate there. So this is to give us guidance so that when we do our update to the zoning ordinance, we have a policy statement here that guides us to actually develop some regulations that limit the aggregation of parcels. Then under place types, this was in response to some various comments that we received including those, that list again, that originated from Esther Pat. So for neighborhood one, we modified the, so I think the recommendation from those comments was to strike everything after duplexes. Our recommendation is just to strike townhouses. So it would read that these neighborhoods consist primarily of single houses with some duplexes and may include low intensity, small businesses, and institutional uses. Now, we use the term may with intent. We don't say that they do include or that they often include. We say that they may include. And the reason for that, and I, if I, I should pull up, I'll pull up the place types map here in a second, but there is a huge swath of Urbana that's covered by, covered by the neighborhood one place type. So it'd really be to make general statements where we, or to make a statement where we strike out the possibility of having things like small businesses and institutional uses in anywhere that's painted neighborhood one. Seems to me that we would kind of be tying our hands when we go to rewrite the zoning ordinance because not every neighborhood one is equivalent to every other neighborhood one. These descriptions of the place types are sort of high-level descriptions of, you know, of these places. They're not intended to directly indicate exactly what exists on the ground or exactly what each of these neighborhoods must look like in the future. It's to give us policy direction when we go to rewrite the zoning ordinance, which is where we would really look at neighborhoods, each individual neighborhood in more detail. Okay. So then also for neighborhood one, so then we have the more detailed descriptions under the each place type themselves. So... So again, for the general description, neighborhood one would read, we changed it to read the same as it did above. And then, under land uses, which there were some, there had been some suggestions on how to change this, we have it reading that it would be mostly residential, primarily single houses. I think that's pretty clear. But then to say, and there's some nuance in how we changed, in how we changed the language here, but then we would have it say, so let me just read what it said before. Before, it said duplexes, smaller apartments, townhomes, and some accessory dwelling units are interspersed. So that "are" seemed a little less, less open, as I was just saying. We use the word "may" to be a little more, yeah, a little more flexible. Thank you. So now it would read "Some duplexes, smaller apartments, townhomes, and accessory dwelling units may be interspersed." And then later, when it's talking about small businesses like cafes and professional offices, it's, before it said, "Small businesses like cafes and professional offices are appropriate on corners or along the edges of neighborhoods." We changed that "are" to "may be," because, again, neighborhood one covers a giant swath of the city. Not all neighborhoods are the same. So in some of these neighborhood ones, it may be appropriate for small businesses on corners or along the edges of neighborhoods. And that's it. That's all the changes that we've made since May 5. I do, I did want to pull up the map just to show the visual, because I said I would pull up the map. I don't think I have it at the ready, so I'm just going to have to go to the web. I think the easiest way to get there is through ImagineUrbana.com and go to the draft plan.
Helpful tutorial and reminder where to find it, too.
Yeah, sorry, I'm clicking through fast. I know you can do YouTube at like 2X speed. I don't know if you can do it at like half-speed.
Composit.
But the internet being slow there helped me out. Okay. All right, so this will slowly, slowly load up. If you're here in the audience, this is the map that's over on the wall there as well. So again, these are the place types map, and I do want to restate something that I've stated many times, is that this place types map was based on the future land use map that is in our current comprehensive plan. We didn't make that many changes other than to, we did consolidate the number of future land uses into place types. Okay, so every area that's the light yellow here, if I zoom in, it might zoom in too much. That's not too much. Okay. All right, so that's the south of Urbana. So any area that's yellow is N1. So there's a lot of Urbana that is N1. It's not going to, it doesn't give me all of Urbana, but, so we've got many, many different areas in Urbana that's N1. So when we're describing it, you know, we want to be, we want to be clear, but we don't want to be, you know, so tightly, yeah, so restrictive in what we say that it, you know, that it restricts us. Because these neighborhoods, they are, a lot of them are very different. They were developed at different times. So we tried to come up with statements that, again, give sort of a high-level description of these places. I think that's all we have. So I think that wraps up our presentation. We'll take some questions if you have them.
Any questions? Grace.
Thank you. I got to remember what they are now in my notes here. Okay, thought, maybe not formulated a question, but there probably is one in there. What I recall when we were working on this comp plan throughout the earlier years of it, was that there was kind of an intention to stay away from neighborhood-specific planning in the idea of the comprehensive plan. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I don't know if you could explain a little more with the Philo Road being the area? I mean, I hear that that makes sense to say that this just will be where we start, but we haven't actually done the plan in it here. Is that the way we've thought of incorporating that?
Yeah, that's correct. And I mean, the intent is that, well, we have to start, we say we're going to do small area plans. We have to start somewhere. That seems to be the one that makes the most sense to us. So it just seemed to make sense to be explicit about that in the plan. And when we do future small area plans, I don't think we'd necessarily have to amend this plan and say, "The next one's going to be, you know, this other area," or whatever. But I think we just wanted to be, to be clear, so that didn't get lost somewhere.
We wanted to make sure Philo Road is on everybody's mind right now, and making sure that it had a place in the plan of significance.
Yeah, I appreciate the insight, which I think makes sense, but I was just trying to balance with the other idea that we had from the 2005 plan. It seemed like, from what I recall, there were like a neighborhood or two that was kind of more heavily influenced or planned in details than others, and we were trying to avoid that and kind of go more broad. So I appreciate explaining kind of where those two thoughts come in together.
We appreciate you bringing that up, because that's exactly the background.
Mary Alice?
So I think some of this is a chicken or the egg question. So there's three big things that kind of have to happen if the comprehensive plan gets approved. I think the first big step was a housing study. We've already talked about kind of the neighborhood plans. And then the second big move is the zoning ordinance. Those are three really large changes that are all derived from the comprehensive plan. So my question to you is, what is the timeline that you foresee for those three things, and what are the orders that you see those three items taking place? So the housing study, the neighborhood plans, and the zoning rewrite.
Yeah. Well, we haven't discussed exactly what the timeline would be to do all three of those. I know the housing study is something that we had planned to do pretty soon after the adoption of the plan. The zoning ordinance update is something that we budgeted $125,000 for in this fiscal year. So my thinking is that we would put out a request for proposals for a consultant to help lead that process pretty soon. Again, this is just speaking off the cuff, though. We have to have conversations internally as well. And for small area plans, I have been in conversations with Dustin Alred, our Plan Commission Chair, to possibly have one of his plan-making classes assist in that process. But nothing's been formalized there, so, and that, I don't know if I mentioned it or not, but it was, that would be for the Philo Road area. So that one might, we might start that one soon, but it's, yeah, nothing's set in stone yet.
And in the tracking progress area, and for some reason, I'm not sure.
It's being really slow.
Yeah, it's real slow, and I apologize. But under tracking progress, it actually says whether something is a short-term initiative, midterm, or long-term, and it tells how many years that is. So short terms usually, there's immediate, and then short terms like one to two years that we'd be implementing that. So all of these things are taking place parallel. It's not one after the other after the other. Many of them are taking place simultaneously.
Well, that finishes loading. I believe Mayor Williams wanted to respond as well.
I was just going to say to Mary Alice, I've met with RPC, was that last week? The week before? It's all running together around the housing study, and I've got some documentation just around that, and I can communicate with that, you know, as far as timeline, next steps. I can communicate with you here this week.
Yeah, that would be great. I think, and I'm not going to get into discussion right now, but I think that you can understand the concern of some people in terms of having a very broad brush of this comprehensive plan. And, you know, at the end of the day, people want to know, "What does that mean for me?" Right?
Absolutely.
And what does that mean for me is the neighborhood and the zoning. And so that's the chicken or the egg, and that's the, what we have to be cognizant of as we move through this. So I'll leave my comments for discussion when we get there. Thank you.
Chandra.
I was going to ask about, we heard a lot about preserving existing single-family homes and duplexes around this N1 definition. So I just wondered, can you speak to that? There's, if the definition of N1 were to be approved and this whole plan approved, single-family homes will still exist, correct? And again, it sort of goes back to that, nothing can be changed without City Council approval.
Correct. Right. I mean, the plan wouldn't do anything to existing homes, whatever type they may be.
So if, like, a single-family home were to go up for sale, a developer buys it, they could turn it into a duplex or a townhouse or?
I mean, not, yeah.
But again, would they need approval for that? Would that be a special use?
Well, so we'll be, we will continue using our existing zoning ordinance until we update it, have a whole new one, whatever, you know, whatever that looks like at the end of the day. So all the existing rules are, will be in place until we make changes to the zoning ordinance. And any changes to the zoning ordinance, even the most minor changes require Plan Commission, public hearings at the Plan Commission, they require City Council approval. So there would, there would be no changes to what you can and can't do on a property with the adoption of this plan. This is just a policy document that gives us guidance for our work.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
Other questions? Grace?
I would move approval of ordinance number 2025-04-013, an ordinance approving the comprehensive plan, Imagine Urbana, Plan Case Number 2502-CP-25 on the regular agenda for council.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Discussion? Mary Alice?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
I would like to amend the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan specifically to include in the definition of N1 that it preserves the existing single-family or duplex zoning wherever it currently exists. To change the definition of N1 to be, "These neighborhoods consist primarily of single houses with some duplexes, and the description of N1 under place type should be changed to residential, primary, single houses, duplexes, and some accessory dwellings, et cetera. Home-based businesses can be elsewhere. Remove the corridor neighborhood designation." So those four changes I offer up as an amendment.
Second.
Are the original movers have to agree to those amendments, correct?
Or is that a separate?
So if it's a friendly amendment, yes, they would have to agree to it. If it is a freestanding amendment, we will consider it separately, and it does require the second, and so that would be the motion on the floor for discussion.
Can you clarify if you're making a separate amendment, or?
I'm happy to make a friendly amendment, but I don't know if the people who moved it would accept it as a friendly amendment.
No, I think I would like to have a separate vote on the amendment.
It's fine.
As would I.
Okay. So there's a separate. Are, is there any discussion around that?
Yes. Now would be the time for discussion, since there is a motion on the floor, but discussion should be limited to the current motion, which is the amendment.
Discussion related to the amendment, Grace.
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand the proposal. So essentially, cutting out the description of N1, so it doesn't include low-intensity, small businesses, or institutional uses, is one of your recommended amendments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, kind of big picture here, what I've been comparing it to is the existing R1 allowances, right? Because currently, in R1, we can have single-family dwellings, or extended occupancy, or community living facility, category one. I don't want to get into details, I don't know. You could also have agriculture, country club, golf course, or schools, and those are all permitted by right currently in R1, right? And then special uses, R1, are things like library, museum, gallery, institutional, educational, charitable things. Conditional uses are currently, an artificial lake, okay? A daycare facility, a lodge, or private club, government building, bed and breakfast that's owner-occupied. So just to me, when I'm reading like currently R1, I feel like the description of N1 is not wildly outside of the current R1 zoning rules and what practically exists, right?
Yeah, but I mean, we've been, we've been told R1 and R2 don't exactly map onto N1 and N2 and neighborhood centers. So I've been trying to kind of divorce them, and I just want to speak a little bit to kind of the reason that I put forward this amendment. And certainly, the comprehensive plan doesn't change zoning of individual parcels. That doesn't happen. Zoning of individual parcels will change if we change the zoning, right? And as I alluded to earlier, we have a little bit of a chicken versus the egg, and I want to say that there are all different kinds of housing is needed in different areas in Urbana, right? There are some areas that are only apartments. There are some areas that are only single-family. There are some areas that are only institutional. There's, so there's concentrations of a lot of this stuff, and I really feel like the neighborhood plans are the ones that are going to allow us to see the detail and say, "Okay, this area up here, the types of, there's not enough living types of X-type," right? So I feel like it would calm the waters as we, before we do the housing study and the neighborhood study and the zoning ordinance, if we at first at least acknowledge that the single-family and the duplex zoning will not change in neighborhood one. So it will be single-family and duplex and et cetera in neighborhood one. You know, I do want to respond a little bit to something that was said during public input today, which is that Urbana is only for people who are single-family households with a car. And I actually think that that's an incorrect look of it. What we have here in Urbana is we have a lot of apartments. Not to say that's bad, but if we're talking about diversity, we need to be thinking not only of apartments and townhouses, but we also need to be thinking about houses, like single-family houses. A lot of people have been talking about that because they're going away. And so if we want to ensure that we have diversity of housing stock, we don't want to push those away, which is another reason why I think putting that here in the comprehensive plan now makes a lot of sense. We've talked a lot about how this is a living document, and we're going to be making changes as we go through. I think adding those neighborhood plans and maybe some modifications might be needed to neighborhood one. But at the moment, I think that this is the right way to go for us to be able to communicate to potential buyers, to potential developers, as we go through this phase of the housing study and the neighborhood and et cetera, et cetera. We're going to be in this gap of having a comp plan, having these three other items that are being worked on, and meanwhile, there's going to be people who are going to be buying and selling properties and so forth, and the only thing we really have to go on is our existing zoning law and the comp plan. And whenever we get something with a special use permit, or we get a major variance of some kind, or we get a PUD, it always comes back to what's in the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan will be this. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to prevent some of that, some of that uncertainty in terms of what do we mean about N1 while we get these other things figured out. So that's why I offer these up as an amendment.
Mayor Williams?
I'll just speak to, you know, folks know that I'm about finding that middle ground, and not to oversimplify it, I will say that I, you know, do support, you know, the said amendments. You know, I guess my thought process is understanding, you know, as we've been saying, that, you know, this is a living document, right? And, you know, truthfully, we can't, I can't tell folks that they can make changes as we go, and, you know, nothing's set in stone if you need to, you know, update it, we can do that, and then not have a willingness to accept that same input, right? So, you know, as far as, you know, I'm concerned, what I don't want to see is us holding on another, us another two years, five years, whatever the time may be, down the road, and we're still having the same conversation because of, you know, two or three sentences that some groups, you know, are opposed to, you know? So I just say that, you know, I am in support of it, of the said, you know, the So I just say that, you know, I am in support of it, of the said, you know, the said changes. But, you know, just understanding that, you know, again, this is a living document. We will adjust as we see fit moving forward if need be. Thank you.
Chandra, would you be willing to take the chair?
I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I appreciate that there's this attempt to find that balance. I personally feel like city staff have been very responsive to the feedback that they received. I feel comfortable with where things stand. And I say that partially because N1 is a big umbrella. So I want to be responsive to the feedback that we've received, but also recognize that, yes, there are additional phases in terms of operationalizing a strategic document, right? So this is the big picture. What are the general, what's the general guidance that we want? I have a lot of concerns about saying, you know, if we've only got duplexes and single families in this neighborhood, that that's how it's going to be going forward. I don't believe that that's appropriate for all N1 districts. So while I appreciate that feedback, I'm having a little bit of a hard time keeping track of all of the pieces that were recommended in this amendment. But as it, as it is, I'm concerned that we are restricting the N1 possibilities based on one N1 district preference, which I think is valid, right? I think that there's a lot of reasons for why we're hearing those concerns. But I think there are also a lot of N1 districts that would benefit from some of the flexibility that's, that could come as we look at zoning, as we look at the community plans. And if we negate that opportunity now, I think it will, could be detrimental to the community.
I give the chair back if you'd like it.
I will. Thank you, Chandra. Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with some of those ideas of keeping it broad with the N1 here. Also, the point being that I was trying to make with reading the R1 is that there is currently no zone or area in the city that is only single-family houses and duplexes. To my understanding, there hasn't been, there's not, I don't think there should be. So I don't see any reason to take out those other things that even in now in R1, you could have a park, a school, a country club, a small farm on a plot. So I just don't think that it's accurate even to say that N1 is only single-family homes and duplexes when I don't think that acularity reflects any of our existing conditions or zoning. And then I had a question here, I guess to clarify, Mary Alice with your motion and maybe for staff too. And if we're talking about the same things with home office or small home business, like what are we talking about? Like working from home, like I'm working on my computer at home and like that? Or I'm like selling things and running a business out of my home? So I just wanted to be sure we're on the same page as far as, are we calling it a home business, a home office? What are we calling it?
Yeah. Kevin, could you clarify? I think you've clarified this in the past, that it can be very broad.
Yeah, I've clarified, sorry, I can't even speak. I clarified it in the past, and I feel like this is just confusing to have in here because we, we currently allow home businesses at, at different levels of intensity. We allow them everywhere already. We just added that to the plan because we wanted to be explicit, like, yes, you can do a home-based business. But we do have rules in place, so like if you're just working from home, you don't, you know, you, you, I mean, technically, we require you to get a permit, which is kind of, kind of weird. But anyway, that's just allowed without any sort of like fee or anything like that. And then there's some more intense home-based businesses that, that we require you to get a permit for. But we just, I think in our effort to be sort of pro-home business, we have made things confusing in, in the plan, so.
I don't know if that helps.
It, I don't think, I don't think it helps. I mean, yeah, you, I just don't, I don't want, I guess what I'm afraid of is that a future zoning ordinance update. If we don't explicitly have this in here, like, I don't want the rules we currently have in place to get lost. So I just want to be explicit that, yeah, you can do home-based businesses.
And in what is in front of you on your computer screen, the land uses, I mean, it actually says small businesses like cafes, like professional offices. So it doesn't limit it to home-based?
Yes. Going back to the home-based businesses piece, sorry, I just want clarification on this too, because my understanding as it stands currently is that, yes, someone technically should have a permit just from, you know, if they've got a job, they're working remotely, that this is an opportunity for us to say, yes, you can have a home-based business, yes, you can work from home. And then when we look at the zoning process, that would be an opportunity to say, maybe you don't need a permit to work from home because this is 2025.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Well said.
Mary Alice?
So I just want to clarify, I don't think, and, and maybe this needs to be worked on a little bit, but my intent wasn't to say that all parcels need to be R1 and R2 in neighborhood one. That's not my intent, because that's not the reality, right? So we have parcels that are R3, R4, we have parcels that are institution, like, I'm not saying that all of neighborhood one, the zoning for those should automatically be changed. What I'm saying is the ones that are for single-family or duplex should maintain, those particular parcels should maintain. But I'm not saying that all the other ones now need to be changed back to, to single-family. Does that make sense?
Sure. I'm not sure if that, I think it might be more comment directed towards Grace's question because I, that was, that was clear to me, and I, I just don't agree.
No, it's fine.
So, yeah. Any other discussions on the amendment? Chris?
Yeah. Couple elephants in the room that aren't getting discussed. The amendment is a reaction to the reality that corporate developers are eager to swallow the West Urbana. And they want to be right on that edge of the university to build unaffordable luxury student housing. And the neighborhood is trying to protect itself from that. And that leads to the second elephant. New construction, I'll say it again, is not affordable for people that are on SSI, are on disability, fixed incomes, describe it however, are on a housing voucher. There's no price point in new construction that is affordable to those kind of people. And all this talk of, and I'm sorry, and this is going to make everybody angry, but single-family homes in West Urbana are affordable to recently graduated married couples, yes, and that should be protected and available. But honestly, there's not much in West Urbana that is affordable for poor people. I'm sorry. It just isn't there. So those are a couple elephants that I want to flag. And the amendment that we've just proposed is trying to protect, in the beginning here, and with all due respect, Allerman Cole studies very accurate assessment that there does need to be flexibility in the rest of Urbana. But what's happening here is a protection of a single area that is aggressively sought after by developers that don't live here, developers that are big and are looking for profit, not, you know, what the noble goals that we might have, which is housing for everybody and all these flowery things and density and walking and biking. They don't care about that. They want to make some money. So I just want to put that into the thought process here.
Chandra, would you take the chair?
I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I appreciate that being brought up. I appreciate the advocacy that I'm seeing from the council members for Woonah. Woonah was part of my ward in the past before we redistricted too, and I have a deep respect for the beauty and the, the unique character of that neighborhood. But I want to push back on a couple things. One, I want you to prove it that we've got out-of-state developers who are specifically, I know we had one PUD, right, that was rejected by council, right? That's the process working. But overall, the property values in Woonah, show me that that is an investment, that is that opportunistic, is the best target area for those developers, right? I'd like to see data on that. I don't, I want us to be making fact-based decisions, not decisions based off of feelings. So there's that piece. The other thing I will say is, again, not all N1 is Woonah, right? So we need to think about, as we operationalize this plan, how do we preserve that important part of this, of this community? Absolutely. But I don't want that to come at a cost of, quite frankly, the area that I live in, where developers who have done incredible work to revitalize blighted properties are struggling to be able to afford, to be able to build housing for people. So we have just vacant lots because of the challenges with our zoning that I'm seeing, that I'm hearing about from my constituents. And I, feel free to push back and say, well, you know, where's your evidence? I'll, you know, I can do that work too, right? I hear that. But I think that it's important, we're looking at the same categorization for two very different parts of the city, right? So I'm not debating the need to find that balance and that protection. But also, you know, you look at some of the feedback, I don't have businesses in my ward, right? So we've talked so much about the food desert in Charisa's ward, but, you know, for folks who live near me, they are going down to Philo Road, right? And that means going all the way down to Meyer unless you want to go to a gas station or, because now we don't even have drugstores, right? So I, I hear that concern, I respect that advocacy for the folks within your wards, and I want to make sure that we preserve that and balance that. And I, you know, appreciate Mary Williams saying, let's find that compromise. But I actually think that we can do that with the way that it's written. I think the adjustments, this is my personal opinion, the adjustments that city staff have made to May, for example, the specific feedback, the way that it has been incorporated, looking at the concerns that residents had, I believe that we have that flexibility to make sure that we are being responsive to the unique characteristics and needs of the various, not just wards, but neighborhoods within our wards. But if, with all due respect, if we only look at the needs of Woonah, we are at risk of hurting other parts of the city of Urbana, and I can't do that. So that's, that's, that's my pushback.
Okay. I'll give you the chair back.
I will take the chair. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, a little, little, yeah, a little more pushback. One of the other things that we wanted to do was have that housing study, when you ask for data. And I think you agree with that, that that needs to be done. When does it need to be done is the question. And I, to address one thing that Mary Alice kind of in passing said, Kevin, is that the fear is the comprehensive plan becomes the rule before we've ever had any zoning changes. And, and we keep worrying about the, what keeps, and we saw it in language earlier in this, and I think you've changed it, but it was, we're going to change our zoning laws according to this plan. And so the plan feels like it's running the show, and I think you know it to be the reverse of that. It's always zoning is the final outcome. But we're worried that the, the plan is going to drive everything. I mean, I don't know what the question is.
Mary Alice?
So I have a couple of thoughts. The first one is, and just because you wanted data, I was curious, how many apartments are available for rent in Urbana today? So I logged in, and there's 279 apartments available for rent. I looked at the most recent buildings that we had. So the Gather for a studio is $1,300, for a one-bedroom is $1,600, and for a two-bedroom is $2,100. That's Gather on University. The Retreat, you could, you could have one room and not choose your, your people that you're living with in a four-bedroom for $685, so that's a little more affordable. Or you can get a two-bedroom, which you have both, which is $1,200, so the Retreat's a little bit more. And then Vine Street, right across the street, that's close to $1,700. So these are high rents in brand-new buildings, and I think, I think everybody here understands that new construction means usually higher rents for those specific buildings. I don't think we have any argument, as long as there's no subsidies. If there's subsidies, that's a whole different story, right? But if we're just relying on, on companies to come in and build, they're going to build nice places, and those nice places are not going to be affordable to people who are living on a fixed income. But to your point, and I don't have exact numbers to tell you, I can say that there was the PUD that did fail on Oregon, on Lincoln. That was an aggregation of, I think, seven properties, if I remember correctly. In that same location, before that, there was another developer who wanted to come in and build something that kind of was like a dorm, which was kind of crazy. There was the aggregation of parcels on my corner, Lincoln and Nevada Street. That was an aggregation of four parcels and an apartment building that came. So the, the big apartment buildings that I see are along that Lincoln corridor, because we've got Gather and Retreat up there at University. We've had two proposals that have failed on Oregon and Lincoln, and then we had one that was built on Lincoln and Nevada. In terms of big apartment buildings, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if there are other big apartment structures that have gone up in the past couple of years in Urbana that I'm not thinking of, that don't follow that corridor?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. The Den, which is on.
Oh, University.
University.
Yes, that's right.
And it's that little side street.
There's one there.
Starts with an H, maybe. But also, I mean, I'll, I'll point out, those are all 2018, 2019. Just to put those into, into context, those aren't brand-new.
To clarify the, the data that I would like to, you know, in terms of concerns about past Lincoln, right? Because that's where we're looking at in terms of the jurisdiction or the zoning areas. I'm sorry, I don't have the proper terminology. My understanding is there's been debate going back and forth about whether that side of Lincoln would be included in that neighborhood or not. Is that, does that side of Lincoln still, is that in?
Yes, it is.
It is.
And that's one of the things that I wanted removed.
Sure, go ahead.
If we could get that clarification.
I did, that, that is a good, a good opportunity for me to, where was that? Was it on here? Do you have the memo? Okay, sorry. I'm trying to set, set, set this up for, oh, on what? Just on the city's website, yeah. So, so we had made changes to the, oh, there we go. Oh, no, that's not it. We had made changes to the area along Lincoln Avenue previously, I think right after the May 5th meeting, we went and we made changes, which we presented at the open house. So we tightened up what was called Corridor Neighborhood to only include parcels that were on, along Lincoln Avenue. So on the east side of Lincoln, but along Lincoln Avenue. And that aligned with what we had been hearing at Plan Commission and after Plan Commission from folks, because we had initially drawn it where it kind of encroached into the middle of the block going to the east.
Well, you took a, we took a straight line down, and that's really not accurate. It was only the forward-facing properties that should have been included.
Yeah, so, so we scaled that back, sorry. I was going to grab that. I was just going to go here. So, and I, I think there, there may have been some confusion based on the colors that we used in the previous maps, because one of the, Council Member Wu, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, one of the proposals was, oh, page 17. One of the proposals was to have the Corridor Neighborhood only go down to Green, or be along Green Street and not along Lincoln Avenue. Well, it, so it was not along Green Street, and I, so I re, I made these colors more understandable.
Because we think people were confusing N2 with N1.
Yeah, so I think people were confusing the N2 with the Corridor Neighborhood, because they used to be pretty similar in color. So I totally understand how there may have been, you know, some misreading of the map. But that, essentially, the N2 goes down to Oregon Street, which reflects the boundaries of, of the current comprehensive plan. The 2005 plan had some like multifamily residential, this, this lines up with that directly. So now the Corridor Neighborhood only goes from downtown, along Springfield, comes down the east side of Lincoln. You see it tightens up, it's only along parcels that are along Lincoln. It kind of jogs out here, because there were some apartment buildings that have some parking lots associated with them and some larger fraternities that have sort of parking lots that do go into the middle of the block. But then it, you know, it's scaled, it comes back, so it's only along Lincoln Avenue. And we did that based on, on feedback, we heard, and I think.
That was, that was a correction that was made early on, as far as tightening that up. But I don't think, since we didn't have council member, council meetings where we actually discussed that, the public just really wasn't aware of what had happened there to notice it. And then Kevin alluded to the, the color changes. Then we started hearing about, we started getting feedback. Then we started hearing about, we started getting feedback that we could definitely tell people weren't, that were, weren't clear on where those boundaries were, so then he changed the color. But that original corridor was changed early on, because we had the straight line, and that wasn't accurate, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Unless there's anything else pressing, I'd like to call the question on the amendment. Oh, Grace?
Could we just clarify the pieces of it? Was this just N1, or was there something else you opposed with the corridor?
Actually, and I don't know how to do this, but I was going to ask if council would feel more comfortable with me altering my amendment. I don't know if it would make a difference or not.
You certainly can, and I would advise that prior to us voting on it.
Okay, all right. Chair, may I, may I change my?
Please.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask is that the, Kevin, would you mind pulling up the N1 for me again, the place types?
Yeah, let me see if I...
Place types.
I can zoom in a bit, too.
So what I would like to propose is that we keep the updates in the land use, and also include the intent to preserve existing single-family or duplex zoning wherever it currently exists. So we're keeping all these different land types, but also, at the same time, letting people know who are designated at that point, that that would stay. So that's my amendment to the amendment.
I'll second that.
So just to clarify, is that the only amendment that you're making at this point?
And all the other ones that you had made?
Or the other ones as well?
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to go with that for now. We're going to do that, and actually, let me, let me add something. I'm going to add removing the Corridor Neighborhood on Lincoln, because that is, that's a tricky one. That Lincoln corridor, it's very hard. It's very open to development, and by opening the door to a Corridor Neighborhood in that area, I think it's going to make things very challenging. So I'm going to keep preserving existing single-family, and I'm going to keep removing Corridor Neighborhood.
I'll second both those.
So those two items are the totality of the amendment?
Those two items, yes.
And that's improved by the second. Okay. Any discussion specific to those changes? Just because I think it could be confusing to do a voice vote, I'm going to ask for the clerk to call the roll on this proposed amendment. Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colossetti?
No.
Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Councilmember Wilkin?
No.
That motion fails. So we are back to the original motion to move this ordinance forward, which was motioned by Grace and seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion on the ordinance as it stands? Grace?
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate some of the sensitivity here. I think that this is an important guiding document, but also not the end-all-be-all. Whereas I think in the zoning ordinance, we do need to pick every single word, because a shall versus a may changes the law and how we interpreted it, and that has a really big impact. I think the comprehensive plan, a few of the wording nuances isn't going to be the make or break. I agree that it's a living document. I hope that we utilize this one a little more than how I saw the 2005 one utilized, which was not really much, referenced in a few kinds of things. But I don't think that this is tying our hands, it's not set in stone. I am willing to not take this as the end-all-be-all when it gets to the zoning discussions where it does matter, this level of detail, I think even more so. I also did just want to remind us of the capitalistic society that we live in, and that market rates are what dictated. At this point, we don't have any mechanism that I'm aware of where we can control rental prices or the housing market in any way, shape, or form, as far as broadly in the free market and societal development goes. So I agree that, yes, new construction will likely be more expensive, but the same thing goes for single-family homes as apartments. Just because they're single-family doesn't mean they're affordable, and even oftentimes less affordable. So I just don't know about that argument that, for some reason, single-family homes would be more affordable, because they're still expensive when newly constructed, or just in general. And I think it's important to, you know, keep in mind the history of exclusionary zoning and the racist, classist divisions of housing and societal development that are still impactful today. And I, again, I just don't think it accurately reflects that there is nowhere in town where that is only single-family homes and duplexes that's allowed, this doesn't exist. So I think that we need to have balanced intentional development. I agree, I don't think that we need to turn into North Champaign and have a big industrial shopping center as the entirety of our town, but I also think that we need to develop in our own way and not miss out on some of these developments, so that we can continue things. So I think that it's a balance of intentional development in our own Urbana kind of way. I think that's all for now, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree with much of what Alderman, Colossetti, and Wilkin have said tonight. I think we're all moving, I think, in the same direction here, trying to get to the same place. And I'm just trying to represent the folks in my area, I think you all understand that. But I do like this conversation, I've enjoyed this debate very much. Great job, Kevin, great job, Andrea. And, you know, no, I mean, this is a great process that we're, and we're really struggling with this document, and we're trying to do this right, and, you know, I just want to encourage us to keep it going and keep it civil, and I think we can, and I think we're all headed in the right direction, though.
Any other discussion? Okay. All right, I do appreciate the time and attention everyone is spending on this. It is important, and also making sure we have a plan when we get to operationalizing it. Again, just for convenience, to be able to make sure we track the votes appropriately, if the clerk will please call the roll. Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Colossetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-07-058R, a resolution endorsing the Champaign-Urbana Urban Area Transportation Study, Kuwatz-Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study. And if y'all don't mind just doing the normal introductions again, since people may not have been with us previously, appreciate it.
There we go. I'll go first. My name is J.D. McClanahan, and I am a planner at Champaign County Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening, I'm Carmen Franks, Assistant City Engineer with Public Works.
I'm Kate Swinford, a Professional Traffic Operations Engineer with Lockmueller Group.
Okay, we are back to talk about the Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study. Much more abbreviated presentation this time than two weeks ago, so trying to address some of the remaining questions that were out there at our last presentation. So just wanted to go through quickly the project goals. Again, the intent of this study was to find recommended improvements or a concept plan in a final report that would increase the transportation safety, improve mobility, and enhance multimodal connectivity for the entire corridor. That's from Florida Avenue to Green Street along Lincoln Avenue. I just wanted to highlight a few other of the objectives of the study. I mentioned we have, we are getting a report at the end of this with recommendations. These are projected to impact safety and mobility. The city intends to use this report, use this study to pursue grants, and it will serve as a guide for implementation and documentation for those applications for funding assistance and for moving forward into the design phases of the project. Want to quickly go through the recommendations that we went into detail on two weeks ago. So we had consolidated crosswalks with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so those are the pedestrian-activated flashing lights. We had on-street bike lanes across the entire corridor, both sides of the street, conversion of the four-lane roadway segment to three lanes, so it's two through lanes and one turn lane. And then access restrictions at Oregon and Ohio, we're proposing right-out only. At Indiana, in-only, so that's both from northbound and southbound on Lincoln Avenue. Vermont and Nevada, right-in and out-only, and then a couple of shifted bus stops. And in addition to this, I want to point out that we are recommending that we keep full access at Green Street, Illinois Street, California, Ohio, Michigan, Pennsylvania, and Florida. So that's full access, both northbound and southbound, onto all of those side streets from Lincoln Avenue. All right, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Yeah, thank you. So this slide is intended to show the approximate traffic rerouting. I know that a lot of the conversation has been about the potential access closures and vehicle implications, specifically for Bucy Avenue. At the prior meeting, we showed kind of two images, one on the left, one on the right, and the image on the left was the total amount of vehicles that were expected to be rerouted, and the image on the right was one example of vehicles that could be rerouted, specifically through Ohio Street. So the reason that those two didn't quite, you know, add up the math exactly across the two is that was a very specific example for Ohio only, and we did not show vehicles that are assumed to be rerouted elsewhere through the network. So we simplified it tonight, hopefully, with just showing the one graphic showing the total amount of vehicles that are accessing the corridor at each of the minor side streets. And we can talk about, you know, potential reroutes and paths that people could choose to make further in discussion. But in general, we're hoping that this slide gives an overview of the totality and the high, you know, high-level overview of what we're talking about. The total rerouted traffic expected on this corridor is less than 6% of the total traffic accessing the corridor in the AM, and less than 7% of traffic accessing the corridor in the PM. So this really is a minor percentage of vehicles that would be impacted, that are currently using the corridor today. This totals about 100 vehicles per peak hour, so 100 vehicles in the AM, 100 vehicles in the PM total. I really want to point out and stress that that's not concentrated on any one intersection or any one movement. Those vehicles will have the choice to reroute through the open intersections that are left in the network. As Carmen pointed out, there are many of those, Green, Illinois, California, Ohio, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Delaware, or Florida. Some of those vehicles may choose to traverse Bucy Avenue for those reroutes. We've definitely taken that into account, and, you know, certainly appreciate all of the conversation that we've had around that question. The current average daily traffic, total traffic on Bucy Avenue is around 275 vehicles per day. I'd also like to point out that of the approximately, you know, 100 vehicles per peak hour, that we are asking to choose a different route to get to Lincoln, some of those folks are already traveling along Bucy, so it's not necessarily a new trip to Bucy. Some of those folks counted in those 100 vehicles per peak hour are already on Bucy, so it's not a complete duplication in this, in this plan. We'd also like to reiterate that the planning capacity of a local street, providing context for livability, is about 1,000 vehicles per day. So Bucy's currently at 275. A typical street that provides great livability would be 1,000 vehicles per day. IDOT allows up to 5,000 vehicles per day for a local urban street such as Bucy. So we believe that we are well within the constraints of what Bucy is already built to handle. And again, just to try and put into context, you know, kind of a larger overview, understanding of what this means, those 100 vehicles per peak hour total represent less than two cars per minute spread across the remaining network with full access, which again will be Green, Illinois, California, Ohio, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Florida. Now to...
Yeah, yes. Just wanted to add one thing for context with that one, that the average daily traffic on Lincoln Avenue is between 10 and 13,000. So for comparison there, we were looking at a much, much smaller scale for Bucy. A couple of the others, Pennsylvania, we're at over 1,000, so 1,600 on the east, 2850 to the west.
Carmen, could you pull your mic a little closer? Sorry, when you look down, it's hard for us to hear.
Just checking my numbers. Florida is looking at 10,000 to 12,000 as average daily traffic loading, and Green, just for context, is over 2,000 to the east and 3,900 to the west. So just want to put that into perspective, the scale here of what Bucy is compared to some of these other streets nearby.
No, no problem. To provide additional reassurance, that the Ohio Street intersection will still remain acceptably in the future, even with all of these potential reroutes, we've done a small snip of an analysis showing the existing traffic and the resulting measures of effectiveness, so level of service, delay, resulting queue length, and then volume-to-capacity ratio. Those are the top two, white rows, the existing condition as it is today. The estimated condition would be what we anticipate the additional traffic stress on Ohio would be. And then the worst-case scenario at the bottom shows the results of if every single vehicle impacted by a restriction elsewhere on Lincoln Avenue chooses to access Lincoln through Ohio. This is not realistic, not every single vehicle will choose to reroute through Ohio, but for illustration purposes, we wanted to do the analysis anyway to, you know, kind of get a scale of what we could expect based on these reroutes. So to describe a little bit more about the metrics.
I have a feeling that might be where you're going. I think those of us who are not engineers are going to need a little bit of help of understanding this chart, and I think that's where you're headed, so.
Yep.
Yep, yes.
Yep, thank you.
I'm happy to explain. So you will see a letter at the beginning, which is level of service. That is an A to F scale, similar to traditional school grades, where A is really, you have ample capacity, there's almost no delay, people don't wait in a vehicle really at all to traverse the intersection. The other side of the scale, level of service F, would be failing. There's so much congestion that people cannot travel. Level of service E is the minimum acceptable, which translates to the intersection is at capacity. It's not yet failing, but it does not have any more capacity for additional traffic to be routed through. Typically, for corridor studies, we consider level of service D or E as a minimum, desired or acceptable. So if you look at this table, we have As, Bs, and Cs. There are no Ds, there are no Es in any of these scenarios. The number in the parentheses behind the letter is delay, so that is a seconds per vehicle, seconds of delay per vehicle that a vehicle will wait to traverse whatever movement that's associated with. And that value is tied to the letter, level of service. The next number in the brackets is representative of queue length, so how, basically how long waiting cars, what the length of waiting vehicles is to have their turn to access and process through an intersection. Typically, we estimate one vehicle accounts for approximately 20 to 25 feet of queue in vehicle length. So as you can see, most of these results show one car waiting at any given time, and in the worst-case scenario, there is one situation where there's 35-foot queue expected, so that would be approximately two vehicles waiting at any given point, trying to process through the Ohio Street intersection. The final number in the, you know, kind of triangular brackets, it's a decimal point, that is volume-to-capacity ratio. That is a number that relates the physical capacity of an intersection to a theoretical volume of vehicles that it could process. So when I look at that number, it would tell me, do you need additional lanes? Is there enough hard infrastructure, enough concrete? Is this intersection big enough to theoretically process the number of vehicles trying to access it? And the benchmark that we use for, you know, yes, this is good, or no, this is really not an acceptable condition, is .85. So we are much lower than that in all of these conditions. Again, the highest that we get in the worst-case scenario is .33, which is much lower than that, .85 in the theory of what we would consider acceptable or not acceptable. So if we have any additional questions on that, I'm happy to go back and answer that. But again, you know, we thought it would be helpful to give some context across the spectrum of what we're talking about here. I know there was a lot of conversation about, you know, specific numbers of vehicles making specific numbers of turns. Even if they all go through the Ohio Street intersection, which is proposed to remain full access, we expect that it will still remain... full access, we expect that it will still remain operationally efficient.
Can I pause here just to see, are there any question, any further questions on this particular slide? I think that it is helpful to note there's also the written description at the bottom of the slide that we have as well. Chris?
Just real quick, but this analysis is accommodating and anticipating the proposed changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mary Alice?
So another way of saying that, which is very minimal, given the number ranges that you just gave me, the estimated is a slight increase of about three seconds in a delay to get out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, we can move on.
Thank you. Okay, so now let's talk about crashes. I know there was discussion in some of our prior presentations about, you know, why the study even was started, because the intersection of Ohio and Lincoln was designated as a critical safety tier intersection by the Illinois Department of Transportation. And we would like to point out that we, and the study is viewing Ohio as a problem segment, not necessarily only a problem intersection. And we also believe that this is how the IDOT designation views this location as well. So if you look at the image on the right, the, excuse me, the left-hand side of the slide, the number in the circle is indicative of the number of crashes that are reported at the intersections. And then there is a number in the middle of the red bar between the intersections. That number is indicative of the number of segment crashes, total segment crashes that occur in this area. So if you look at Ohio Street, you know, just with kind of blindfolds on, you see 12 crashes. If we step back a little bit and look at the entire segment, there are a lot more crash incidences that are happening in this area and on this segment. And these are the problems that we are attempting to address and trying to solve with this safety study. So how do the proposed improvements relate to this problem segment? We are trying to spread out, separate, remove, or isolate the individual modes of travel within this segment as much as possible. So we are relocating the northbound bus stop north out of this focus area. The proposed relocated location for the northbound bus stop is just north of Iowa Street. The southbound bus stop is proposed to have a proper pull-off to lessen the impacts on traffic flow and the transit vehicle conflicts in this area. We're not proposing that it shift north or south along the corridor, but today it really doesn't have a proper pull-off spot. And with the cooperation of the University of Illinois, we're hopeful that it could have a proper, a proper waiting space to be out of the traffic flow along Lincoln Avenue. The crosswalks south of Ohio and Indiana are proposed to be consolidated to mid-block, providing further separation from transit vehicle interaction, and also really moving it further south away from Ohio Street, where we are proposing that vehicles still have access in this segment. And finally, the access control at Iowa and Indiana not only allows for a more intentional protection of pedestrians as they cross the corridor, but it also prevents vehicles from turning into or from this focus area and this high crash area on Lincoln. I'll turn it over to JD next to talk about public feedback unless there's any other questions.
I'm seeing the clerk. Motion about time. We had a point where we need an extension till, right, we have 30 minutes, right? Sorry to get through this and then we'll see. Sorry, that's not about you guys, that's about our, our order of operations here, so.
I'd move to extend 30 minutes till 10:30.
Well, I think we, we're set till 10:30, actually, as it is. Darcy's just keeping me on my toes. So maybe let's get through this presentation, then revisit, but I appreciate the reminder, and we'll keep an eye on the clock. Let's go ahead and continue. Yeah, thank you.
I was out of order. I still get to talk. So the safety benefits summary, you know, these improvements are concentrated where most of the crashes and most of the severest crashes occur on the corridor, which again is that high crash segment. Actually, over 50% of the segment crashes along the corridor happen within that high crash segment that we just had on the screen. 54% between Nevada and Indiana happen within that focus area. These improvements will reduce conflict points across the corridor. Those conflict points are something inherent to the geometry of the intersection. I know there was discussion in our last presentation about vehicles being required to make additional turns, and does that increase the conflict points? That's a little bit of a misunderstanding. Vehicles travel through a conflict point as they process through an intersection. So somebody making an additional turn, it does not increase the number of conflict points that exist at an intersection, per se. So these improvements aim to reduce the number of conflict points that are inherently available in the built environment along the corridor. The reductions in crashes are, these reductions in crashes are estimated for each type of improvement using a crash modification factor. These factors are based on real-world studies of similar improvements in other areas and go through a rigorous academic process to be vetted for, you know, consistency and viability before they are published on a nationwide repository for professionals such as myself to pull from, to make recommendations in these studies. So we want to detail the modification factors that we are referencing here, specific to individual improvements. The lane reduction for the road diet has an associated anticipated crash reduction of approximately 47%. That applies to all crash types, and that would apply to any area of the section that is going from four lanes down to three. Installing bike lanes on a road that does not currently have one is associated with approximately 32% reduction in crashes, in crashes of all types. Installing mid-block crossings with the pedestrian-actuated flashing beacons is associated with up to an 18% reduction in vehicle pedestrian crash types. And the access control at the unsignaled side street intersections, our original proposal, where there were full closures proposed at some of the side streets, was representative of a 51% potential crash reduction. The revised proposal that is before you now and was before you at the prior presentation has a 43% potential anticipated crash reduction. As access to vehicles increases, that number will be reduced.
Sorry, the colorful boxes got shifted.
Do you want to have a specific question about this one? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Can you remind us again, I'm just going to deal with car to car, not pedestrians or bicyclists. What kind of crashes are we having the most of? Is it the rear-ending stuff?
Yes, most of the crashes on the corridor today are rear-end crashes, and we believe that's happening because there are a lot of activities along the corridor, pedestrians walking in a variety of which ways, drivers slowing down to not have a vehicle to pedestrian incident, but rather it's coming up in the crash data as a vehicle-to-vehicle rear-end.
So to summarize, we're kind of have a disorganized stopping and slowing down, and people are not paying attention and hitting each other.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions specific to this slide? I want to make sure people understand it, but then we can, we'll have time for general questions. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is an additive, right? So every single thing that we've listed here is not like, okay, now we've reduced crashes by 100% because it's over 100%. So my, my question is, do you have a number? Like, if we accepted the plan as is, we can expect to have a 40%, an 80%, a 10% reduction in crash, is there one number?
That aggregate has not been calculated, to your point. It is a, it's not just adding one on top of, one on top of the other, but every additional improvement and every additional factor does support a reduction. It, it does increase, but it's not adding, you know, 47 plus 32 plus 18, as you noted. Now it's JD's turn.
Yeah, so we, we just have one public feedback slide for today. So the data that you're looking at right now is the same data on comment sorting from this last round of feedback that we talked about two weeks ago, just providing one additional way of breaking down and analyzing that data. So what we see here is that data is sorted by the, like, overall sentiments. So you can see support, suggestion, concern, or opposition to, to the different proposals. And you can see in this sorting, support is the most frequent comment type in the last round, with 24 comments. Suggestions were 18 comments, concern was 17 comments, and opposition was eight comments. The, when, we were trying to do some, like, back-of-the-napkin math on kind of all the comments across round two, where we started kind of saying, here are some recommendations, what do you think, through, through round three and round four? The format of those outreach, of that outreach changed a little, and what was actually being recommended changed a little, so it's hard to, like, directly add them up. But the proportions were similar. I think we had about, like, across all three rounds, we had like 950 support comments, like 400, like, in-between suggestion, concern, apathy comments, and then about 250 opposition comments. So all that to say, we, we, in the, this round and then the, the study overall, we have a strong base of support for kind of the overall suite of study recommendations and a variety of kind of suggestions or concerns that we've worked on, worked on addressing, whether through updating the recommendations or answering questions. And these suggestions and concerns can continue to be tweaked and worked through as we move on to the design phase and get more specific. And then we have had, that's not to negate the opposition, that, that has been, has been present, but we, but that has been present at a lower quantity than, than other, other types of feedback that we've received. And I think that's everything that I was going to say about feedback, so I will.
So with the recommendations for all of this, this entire suite of improvements proposed together, we think that this entire suite will achieve the project goals that I covered in the beginning of this talk. So are we increasing the transportation safety? Yes, we think there are significant crash reductions anticipated from each of these improvements. We're improving mobility by maintaining the level of service for all modes of transportation. And we're enhancing multimodal conductivity by adding new infrastructure for bicyclists and safer conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists. Want to add to this, that, you know, maybe we haven't mentioned this before, but the study recommends that we evaluate the configuration of the intersection controls, that means the location of the two-way and the four-way stops on Bucy as a part of our implementation process. So while we haven't, you know, put that out explicitly, it is on the website already. It has been a recommendation from the beginning that, that we're not ignoring Bucy. We know that there will be impacts to the traffic there, and that that is a recommendation that's a part of this, is that we will continue to consider the four-way, the two-way stops, and how traffic will be impacted there. I want to point out too, that while our project limits for this study were from Florida to green on Lincoln Avenue, this doesn't necessarily mean that our project limits are limited to that for design and construction, that if there are improvements needed on Bucy or a side street that's adjacent to this corridor, those could potentially be included in design and construction as well. Also, you know, JD mentioned, we'll continue to receive public input, we'll continue, public input will continue to be sought, collected, and considered as we move forward in design. And designs will evolve and be refined as the project moves forward. So finally, we're asking for your endorsement of the study as a whole because we, you know, have this expectation for the grant that's currently in place through IDOT for this study, that the city council reviews and approves what has been done here, and that we can use this endorsement because it may be required for future funding, funding that we go after. And finally, we're asking for this endorsement with the acknowledgement that designs will continue to evolve and the public input will continue to be collected and considered. Sorry, one more thing, while I said finally, I want to point out, that your endorsement does not mean it's a green light for us to change the one-way at Indiana or any other of the turning movements. These will require an ordinance passed by council. So you will be hearing from us, again, this, your approval today does not mean that we can move forward with that without assigned ordinance from you. So with that, we'll take question, any more questions that you have? Chandra?
That just reminds me of how in traffic commission, we do like the 90-day testing of signs and stuff. Is that a possibility with the change in those streets to right turn only, like, testing that out at some point?
Yeah, there are a number of low-cost and temporary measures that could be implemented to try that out, and such improvements and methods were lightly explored as part of this effort, kind of as a, as a parallel supplement, if you will. So it's definitely possible if that is a desire of this body.
I know, it's just been a bit concerned with public comments, so I just thought that maybe if we tested it out for 30, 60, 90 days, people can see how easy it is to go around and, you know, it doesn't take that much effort.
Mary Alice?
Thank you, and Carmen, thank you for your time and attention, and certainly both of you, three of you from RPC coming several times and walking us through this process. I think that pairing the ins and outs of the different state streets is, that pairing is because of the placement of the bus stops and the proposed pedestrian walks. Is that correct? Is that a correct statement?
In part, yes.
Okay. So what I'm wondering, I know that we've had conversations about the placement of the pedestrian crossing, and one of the items was to connect it to existing infrastructure on campus side so that you're walking, I'm thinking specifically between, what, Jimmy John's and McKinley, right? There's a big path, multi-use path that goes through, everybody walks through that. Can you speak to me a little bit on how you decided to do the, the southern three? So when I say southern three, let me two. So we have one at Iowa, it makes sense that it, it has that path in between Jimmy John's and Allen Hall, sorry. But then we also have, we have three more after that, right, going south? Or the two? I'm looking at pedestrians right now. Let's see here, so we've got Iowa.
Referring to number of crosswalks?
Yeah, I'm looking at the number of crosswalks that, where they're placed. I'm trying to figure out, like, the rationale for where you put them.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? We do need a motion to extend, we're getting a little close on time, if someone's willing to make one.
I can make a motion that we extend to, do you want 10:45 or 11?
I would go with 11 because we still have items.
All right, 11.
Is there a second? Everyone's so excited. If we don't need the time, we'll go, but I heard a second. Do we have to do a roll call for this? Okay. Voice, okay, all those in favor of extending to 11, if needed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay, that motion passes. Okay, back to the question, thank you so much.
So the question is to walk you through the placement of the proposed pedestrian crossings.
Right, so we're trying to, we're trying to keep them away from Ohio, where there's lots of crash, right? So we put a mid-block, right? But, and I see between Ohio and Indiana, that connects to a sidewalk, right? But the one south of there, which is not on that page, I don't think that one connects.
The one between Indiana and Michigan? So in earlier proposals, that crosswalk wa, so today, there is a crosswalk at Michigan, directly north of Michigan. And in the earlier proposals, we did not propose any changes to the location of that crosswalk, and through earlier rounds of public feedback, we heard from users of that crosswalk, specifically patrons of the church on the corner, that they park in the McKinley parking lot and cross the street where the current location is shown, and that would really be preferable for them to use it. And, you know, they didn't believe any of their patrons would actually, I mean, they don't today, they didn't believe they would walk down to Michigan to actually use that crosswalk in the future. So that is why that location was scooted up a little bit for a specific use accommodation.
Yeah, so, so where I'm coming from this is, of course, we have some people who are concerned about the one-way on Indiana, that moving that sidewalk up closer to Indiana, I think, prevents that right-in to Indiana. Well, we have, we have right-in, we don't have right-out, sorry.
Correct.
That's right. That's right. Okay, all right, so, so the, the one that's on Michigan is the one due to feedback from the people who go to church on Sunday?
Correct.
And then the other one is to try and divvy up, make more space in between the crosswalks so that Ohio is not that congestion point?
Correct, and to line it up with an existing path on the west side of the road.
To line it up to with the existing path. All right. So, okay, all right.
Other questions? Is there a motion? Chandra?
Yes, I'll move approval of Resolution Number 2025-07-058R, a resolution to endorse the Champaign-Urbana Urban Area Transportation Study, Kuwatz, Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study, going to City Council for approval.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Grace.
Is there any further discussion, Mary Alice?
Yeah, so this won't come as a surprise to Carmen, since I talked to her about this today. I'm, I'm going to be voting no on this, and, and I realize that this is probably going to pass out of committee, but I, I want to be on the record of basically asking for a couple of things, modifications as we go through this process. The first one is, is that there, there is not a good way for people driving south on Lincoln from the interstate to get into West Urbana from Oregon all the way down to Iowa. There's like, you, you have to go a very weird way around. So right now, there's California and Illinois that you can turn left from driving south on Illinois, sorry, Lincoln, into Illinois or to California, but there's Oregon, Nevada, then Iowa, and then the whole block, and it's, it's going to be really hard for people to get in there. So I'm, I'm going to leave that just as the public thinks about what we do with these changes. I'm, I'm also not 100% convinced that right turns in are detrimental to certain locations, so I'd like to consider that. And then finally, I think it would be good for us to have that composite number of, okay, if we do all of these things, is that 50% reduction in accident, 10%? What is that composite number? So that we really have a way of looking through all these different options. And then finally, I'll just say that I, I am happy to hear that before changing any traffic patterns, it would have to go to City Council with an ordinance.
Chris?
Yeah, I, I'm going to vote no, too, but I want to, I do, I do so to spur further design. I'm completely encouraged, Carmen, by your, you know, promise, and I know your good intent to study this further and to, all the designs are, you know, flexible and can be further studied, and changes can be made, and to spur conversation. Also, I'm, I've been surprised that BPAC has somehow been missing. I've been told twice that they support this plan, but I, they didn't show up, and I was a little confused by that. But I, I like, again, I like the effort, I like the detail, I like, I think we're headed in the right direction. I like our goals, I mean, we got to make that safer, and I think we're on the way. And just to spur the conversation, to spur the, the effort, I'm going to vote no for right now.
Any other discussion?
Am I allowed to comment this time?
Does that work? Are you, are you providing clarification or responding to questions?
Yeah, about the BPAC.
Then, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so BPAC provided their approval to this formally in the meeting minutes, so the draft meeting minutes were included in the packet, and then they have approved those meeting minutes at the last meeting last week. So they've been informed of the project continually and have been supportive. I didn't press them to come and share their support because, you know, they, they did it in a vote at a meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I know a number of us walk, but as someone who bikes a lot, it makes a lot of sense to me, the changes that are being proposed from, from a cyclist's perspective, too. So I, I appreciate all, all the, the work, and again, it's amazing to see the feedback from our community being incorporated even into these early, early, early planning documents. And with that, we will go ahead and take a vote. I think, again, we just know that there's likely to be differences of, yes, it was moved by Chandra and seconded by Grace for approval. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, just to keep track of, of who's voting which way.
And I'm assuming this is also intended for the regular agenda?
Yes, regular.
Okay. All righty. Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you all. All right. Next item of old business is Ordinance Number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for police surveillance technology and databases. Councilmember Wilken, I will turn this over to you and participate as I can, but it's somewhat limited as chair.
Thank you. So to start with this one tonight, just very quickly, I, I do have a can of worms to go through and kind of review what had been proposed in the past. I think for the timeliness and the attendance of tonight, I would recommend that we don't open that can of worms tonight and instead keep it in Committee of the Whole. I would hope to have some more updates. I think there will be some smaller conversations going on in the next few weeks. Hope to meet with the mayor and some others in a kind of different setting and just assess where we are, where we want to go from here, and have an update for Cal that's a little more substantial. So I would recommend that we keep this in Cal. I will be gone August 4th, so we're welcome to keep it there, but I would ask that we hold off till the 18th would be the next Cal.
I'll second that.
So we're gonna, is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Is the motion to, to submit it on the 18th?
It's to keep it in the committee until the 18th.
And to put it until, okay, I just make sure.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion. I was still kind of like explaining the thing, but I would happy to officially move that we keep this item in Cal until August 18th, Cal meeting.
And I think you preemptively got a second. So it still stands. Okay, so it's moved to keep it in the Committee of the Whole by Grace, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Chandra?
Okay, so we've been, I don't want to say kicking this can down the road, but kicking this can down the road a bit. Between now and, and August 18th, what should we be doing? What should, what would you like us to do? I mean, I, I want to make sure we actually have some good conversation around this and get it in motion.
So I think, Grace, if you're willing to answer, what would be most productive to make it so we're a point, at a point to be able to vote on this, that would be helpful, from your perspective as the person who introduced it?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And yeah, given that, you know, it's up to each person, in my mind, I'm good. I think it's good, it's been researched, I'm ready to go, I don't have a problem with it. So I think it's more of whoever still has remaining problems or concerns to send those in, and I do appreciate that I've gotten feedback from some council people over the past eight months, we've been talking about this, those have already been incorporated. So I think that it's, you know, obviously anything from an individual council member that you have an issue with or would like to see changed, that is helpful. And then I think, in my mind at this point, it's just talking with new leadership and getting the police department on board is because that is the player who has not been as involved and still needs a little more information from. But I think as council, I agree, I think we've exhausted our conversation quite a bit already.
Can you send the most recent and up-to-date draft?
I believe it's in the, in the packet.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. Mary Alice had her hand up first, and then I'll come back to you, Mayor Wilken.
So, so, so two things. The first one is, is I'm, I'm happy to hear that part of some of these internal conversations that you're going to have are with the police. I, I think that really is, is a good step and in the direction that I'd like to see. But the second thing is, is that I, I do feel like every time I look at it, we kind of add a new, whole new section, and so, like, right now, we've got a whole thing about changing the ordinance with the human rights and going through CPRB and so forth. And so I would like to ask that whatever ordinance comes to the 18th, that we pare it down to some things a little more manageable? Like, this is phase one, right? Because it's, it's gotten really, really big, and it's going to take us a lot of time to go through all of these individual points. And I think everybody wants to have something that is workable for the city. So I'd like to start with maybe something a bit smaller, with the idea that we can add on to it. That would, I think, further the conversation quicker, but that's just my suggestion.
I think that's a, a recommendation Grace, as the originator, can take into consideration. And I would just suggest, in terms of chairing this meeting and to, to that point of, let's actually move this, not just keep kicking it down the road. If any proposed changes can be directed to Grace, if people don't agree, we can discuss that during the Committee of the Whole in terms of amendments and, and things like that. Mayor Wilken?
I was just going to, you know, just say, too, Grace, as we, you know, kind of been discussing, we're linked up to, to get together and, and speak with PD about the 29th, I believe, is that, if that still works, you know, for, for you. But, and I, I think that that'll be a very insightful conversation, good conversation. I think, I'm confident that we'll be able to bring something on the 18th, so.
All right, any other discussion? All right, so again, that's, hopefully will be the final postponement of a vote on this. But the motion is to keep it in the Committee of the Whole until August 18th. It was moved by Grace and seconded by Chris. I feel like this one, we can just do a, a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Finally, we do have an item of discussion on the agenda regarding council rules and meeting procedures. There were some suggestions in our council packets, and I see Chris.
I'm going to motion that because of the absence of Alder Person, Quisenberry, and Hershey, that we postpone this discussion.
Is that a motion for a discussion? Can we do that?
You can direct staff when you'd like it to come back, which is what's happened to get it to here. In fact, it wasn't even a formal motion, I don't believe, at the June 2nd meeting when we made the decision to bring it back post-budget without a specific meeting in mind. So, which is why it didn't come at the first part of July, because we were still working through a large number of items. I would ask for some specific direction to staff as to when you would like it to come back. I know the August 18th date was thrown out for another item. Is that perhaps on the other side of availability? Will folks be here, we think?
I would recommend, just for time's sake, maybe at a council meeting, because those are typically faster, since it's a discussion anyway.
I guess, I, I don't know what the schedules of different people are, so it would be nice to have as many people here as possible for that conversation. Having it at a committee or a council, it shouldn't matter, because it's just a discussion item.
Would it be possible, I know that there has been a request for information regarding vacations and time away this summer for that, a review of, of who's likely to be absent and see if we at least expect there to be a meeting where everyone will be here in the near future?
My understanding is that both the meeting on the 28th and the 4th will have members absent, and that the meeting on the 11th of August is the first meeting that I'm aware of, which is a council meeting that doesn't have a member that has indicated that they will be absent at this time.
But just to clarify, is the 28th, is there someone other than, I initially was not going to be able to be present, but I now can be? Do you know?
You are the only one that is so far said, for sure, on the 28th, and that is, thank you, it has been a long night.
I, I hear you. Is that amenable to people to, to bring this to the council meeting next week for discussion? Chandra?
I feel like we just went through a lot of things on the regular agenda, like, put everything on the regular agenda that we discussed tonight, so it might be a long meeting next, next week, so.
What about a tentative with a backup date?
Yeah, that's fine, I just want to make, like...
I mean, we could also just put it on the 11th, right?
Yeah.
We could, yeah, I guess this one doesn't have any particular urgency to it, so, yeah. I think having it on a date other than when we're planning on discussing the technology piece, sounds good, so August 11th. So it sounds like we're, we're asking that this discussion be postponed until August 11th, further, further discussion on this topic.
Yeah, I would also just add, if there are any other things that you guys would like to have organized for your consideration, just email them to the clerk's office, because that's what the memo is, is literally just a compilation of feedback from you guys, and it hasn't been amended since June 2nd. So if anything is changed, just send us an email.
Chris? Was it, yeah, so anything, please send any other suggestions or changes to the clerk's office in time for the August 11th meeting. Any other discussion on that item? So, speaking on the discussion, Chandra?
I would like the first thing that we sort of implement under the rules and meeting procedures is switching up the voting thing. That, I mean, I would like that to be the, the first initial thing that we address.
Yeah, we started with that when we first got elected, remember? And then it just sort of faded away for some reason. And it does put James in a weird spot to this, well, or, yeah, the other way. I mean, but it should be mixed up, yeah.
I think it should be the, the clerk who decides every time, like, a little raffle, you never know when, when your name's going to come up.
And I think there, there were some suggestions that are included in, in that discussion for how that could go, so I think, you know, I, I think there probably are some things there was consensus around, or, or based on just general conversation, some, so far, general support, and then there were some, some things that I think needed further discussion. So, yeah, I think, that one certainly, I think, got a lot of, lot of interest, and maybe, you know, for, for August 11th, people coming prepared to, to discuss all of those items and think about if there's anything that's missing. I appreciate Darcy including the existing rules, which I didn't see all last term, so I appreciate having the opportunity to look at those, too. So encourage people to look at those as well. All right, I think we're at a stopping point for that, so next item is council input and communication. Is there any council input and/or communication? Everyone is tired, okay. With no further business before this body, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.